Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start the meeting of Ottawa City Council in one minute. Welcome to our city council meeting for the 8th of September 2021. A few reminders. This meeting is being held through electronic participation in accordance with Section 238 of the Municipal Act 2001, as amended by the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act of 2020. So, members of council staff, please stay on mute unless called upon to speak. Phone-in participants, please use star six to mute and unmute. And members of council who wish to speak, please use the raised hand feature located at the bottom of the participants list in Zoom nine, or in Zoom rather, and star nine for members on the phone. And members are reminded to advise us if they are leaving the council meeting. The meeting will be broadcast on Rogers, Community Television and Ottawa City Council YouTube Channel. Recent discoveries of unmarked graves and Indigenous children across Canada has reminded us of the importance of addressing the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's call to action. The federal government has announced September 30th, 2021, as the first National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. In addition to the AMO communication on the issue of a National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, and yesterday's federal report on the same matter, which we'll deal with later today, I'd like to invite members of council, city staff and residents to take a moment to reflect on the many lives lost and to honour First Nations, Métis and Inuit families who have shared their stories as residential school survivors. If you're able to, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Merci, thank you. At the city council meeting of Wednesday, September 9th, 2020, council passed a motion moved by councillor Moffett and seconded by councillor Harder, directing that I write a letter requesting that the federal and provincial governments formally recognise the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Cancer is the leading cause of disease-related deaths for Canadian children, with 1,700 children diagnosed annually, and some childhood cancers are terminal upon diagnosis. As a result of advances in research, over 80% of children survive cancer. However, more than 80% of survivors face late effects from the disease and harsh treatment. Children with cancer and their families need the best research, medical, financial and emotional support as they navigate the path towards healing. We support the courageous children affected by cancer and commend the hard work and dedication of scientists, healthcare professionals, researchers, volunteers, and all those who are working to overcome childhood cancer and assist families with children affected. I'm very pleased to announce that in February of this year, Health Canada confirmed that the month of September is now formally recognised as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and is included on Health Canada's approved list of calendar of health promotion days used by the Office of Protocol when determining flags raised at city facilities. On September 1st, just last week, I had the pleasure of proclaiming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and presented the proclamation to Candlelighters, a local not-for-profit organisation that provide programmes and services to young cancer patients and their families receiving treatment in the national capital region. I'm also pleased to inform you that the Childhood Cancer Awareness Flag is currently flying at Ottawa City Hall and will be flown the entire month of September. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call please.
Conseil Lulov?
Je suis présent.
Councillor Dudas?
Présent.
Councillor Harder?
Here.
Councillor Suds?
Here.
Councillor Elshantiiri?
Présent.
Councillor Gower?
Is on.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councillor Shirelli?
Here.
Councillor Egoy?
Morning.
Councillor Deans?
Here.
Councillor Tierney?
Present.
Conseil Fleury?
Bonjour.
Councillor King?
Here.
Councillor McKenney?
Present.
Councillor Leeper?
Good morning.
Councillor Brockington?
Here.
Councillor Menard?
Here.
Conseil Cloutier?
Present.
Councillor Kits? I see councillor Kits. Councillor DeRus?
Here.
Councillor Moffett?
Here.
Councillor Mihon?
I'm here.
Councillor Hubley?
Here.
Mayor Watson?
You see?
You have a quorum, Mr Mayor.
Confirmation of minutes, adoption of the process verbal pour le 21 juillet 2021. Confirmation of the meetings of July 21st, 2021. Carrie?
Great.
Great.
Question of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Councillor Suds has a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning colleagues. I just wanted to clarify and put on the record that I did request an unpaid leave of absence at the beginning of the federal election. And I have consulted with the city clerk, as well as the integrity commissioner at the outset, to ensure that I am abiding by all city policies throughout the election. But I am committed to my residence, and that's why I'm here today, and why I continue to work on behalf of my residents, as they would expect me to do. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Councillor Suds. Communications, as presented. Regrets, no filed, no regrets filed to date. Motion introduced, reports. Motion for the presentation of the report. Conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît, for your, and Conseil Kavanaugh.
The rapport numéro 24 du Comité de l'agriculture et des affaires rurales.
The Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 24, Bill Heritage Subcommittee Report Number 23, Planning Committee Report 47, Transportation Committee Report 21, and the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Rural and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act. Explanation requirements at the city council meeting of July 21st, 2021 be received and considered. That rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider the Finance and Economy Development Committee Report Number 28, due to the time sensitivity of the items contained in this report.
Merci beaucoup on the motion.
Thank you so much.
Carrie? Item number one, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 24, rapport numéro 24, le Comité de l'agriculture et des affaires rurales. Item one, zoning bylaw amendment 5254, Bank Street, modification of regulation, zonage 5, 2, 5, 4, Bank. Carrie?
Here.
Item two, Cranberry Creek Municipal Drain, appointment of engineer. Carrie?
Here.
Here.
Item three, exception des pensées du bureau pour sécurité des routes d'Autawa. Carrie?
Carrie, Carrie.
Rapport numéro 23, de soucoumit de patrimoine bâti. Carrie?
Here.
Finance and Economic Development Committee Report Number 28, rapport numéro 20, national day for truth and reconciliation, September 30th, beginning 2021. Journée nationale de la vérité et de la consultation, 30 septembre, à partir 21. Carrie?
Great.
Great.
Planning Committee Report Number 47, rapport numéro 47, le Comité de l'urbanisme, d'investissement pour les logements pour double de 21. Carrie?
Hold, Mr Mayor, a question.
Is it a long question, or should we put it on the?
It's a question, so I don't want to, I don't want to trip up the agenda.
Okay, we'll come back. Official plan amendment for Cedarwood and Baycrest, or a number of amendments, we'll come back to that. Zoning bylaw amendment 1356 Clyde Avenue. Councillor Gower and Moffett have a technical amendment. Councillor Gower, do you like to introduce?
Yeah, I'll wait for it to get up on screen there. I can start reading it in the meantime. Whereas a report recommends approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to 1356 Clyde Avenue to permit an 18 and 28-storey mixed-use development, and whereas the details of recommended zoning were carried at planning committee on August 26, 2021, and whereas inconsistencies between the report and document two, details of recommended zoning have been identified, specifically the omission of the lands to be rezoned from R5CH36 to AM1XXXXYY-H. Therefore, be it resolved that document two, details of recommended zoning be amended by replacing point one with the following text. Rezone the land shown in document one from AM1H9 and R5CH36 to AM1XXXXYY-H, and be it further resolved that pursuant to the plan, subsection 3417, there notice be given.
Okay, I believe councillor Shirelli, did you have your hand up?
Yes, but not on this motion.
Okay, so on the motion, Carrie?
Right.
And is it a long issue that you wanted to deal with, councillor, or could it be dealt with now, or should we come back to it?
It's okay, come back to it.
Okay, thank you. Next is item number nine, zoning bylaw amendment 130 Booth, 301 and 324 Lett Street. Carrie?
Here.
Item 10, modification de règlement de zonage 307 et 309, Ruisseker. Carrie?
Here.
Transportation Committee Report Number 21, rapport numéro 20, le Comité de transport, Montreal Blair Road Transit Priority Corridor Environmental Assessment Study Recommendations. Carrie?
Great.
Mayor, I'd like to form a dissent on the item.
Okay, councillor Fleury, dissents. Item 12, cargo power assisted bicycles, e-cargo bike pilot project, projet pilote sur le vélo cargo. Carrie?
Great.
Here.
Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? No, on the bulk consent agenda as presented?
Yeah, Carrie? Here.
Adoptee? Okay, we'll go to our first held item, which councillor Fleury, did you hold item six, capital strategy?
I did, I have a question for, for, I guess, our Director of Housing, just a clarification from committee. It's great to see council take a leap into investing in affordable housing with the $15 million. I'd love for us to do more, but Saied, I want to understand, if council hadn't identified a capital programme of $15 million, how would we perceive or receive the federal programme, specifically the RHI? Because there seems to be local backfilling of a federal programme to make it achievable locally. So I'm curious to understand, if council hadn't identified the $15 million, how would the city look at such a programme and benefit from it?
Okay, thank you for the question, Mr Mayor. We, I think, of course, the city's capital contributions, council's capital contributions assist a lot with, you know, covering the additional expenses with the RHI. If we didn't have that amount of city capital, we would probably have to build fewer units with the RHI funding that we've received. So the city capital allows us to take on more units and to share some of the risk with the not-for-profit and charitable sectors, deliver the housing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Just as a final, final point to the RHI funding, could you maybe speak to, you talked about newer flexibility that is offered, that in terms of the modular homes and the increase in cost and timing of that, can you maybe just enlighten us? I know, committee, we didn't have a chance to get into that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Let me, within phase one of the RHI, one of the big limitations was that the federal government had required that the city and its partners utilise modular housing as the primary construction type to build the new supportive housing. In phase two, that's been removed, that specific criteria. But we still have, you know, very tight timelines to deliver the units, about a year, year and a half right now. So, you know, as many members of council know, that's not a lot of time to plan, design and build units. So that's one of the changes that has helped, but that's also one of the causes for the, you know, for the high cost of the housing as well.
Thank you, thank you, Saied, and thank you, Mr Mayor, for that. I will support the report. I do want to raise, you know, the situation where we are backfilling a programme. It's a worthwhile programme, it is targeting below market rent and the affordability needs we do, but it's important for us at council, now that we have a renewed plan, we know where our investments need to go, we need to formalise those requests to the feds and the province when programmes become available. So just wanted to make that as a statement on this report, and want to thank staff for the details.
Okay, thank you very much, merci conseiller. On the report, Carrie, adoptee?
Great.
Here.
Next is official plan amendment 2848, 2851, 2881, 2898, Baycrest Drive, and 2820, 2831, Cedarwood Drive, and 2816, Sandalwood Drive. We have a number of motions as well for discussion, so we'll get all the motions on the table first, and then we'll go into questions and debate. So the first motion is by councillor Kits, seconded by councillor Cloutier. Councillor Kits, if you'd like to introduce your motion, please. And I think you might be on mute. Councillor Kits there? I think you're on mute, councillor.
Mr Mayor, I think councillor Kits is having some audio problems. Would it be appropriate for her to second or to perhaps read the motion into the record, if he is able?
Okay, we'll ask councillor Cloutier to read on behalf of councillor Kits, and we'll help councillor Kits get back online. I think it's that rural internet issue that we sometimes have challenges with in our cities, so one of the reasons why we want to get that fixed. So councillor Cloutier, do you want to introduce on behalf of councillor Kits?
Merci, Monsieur Mayor, and thank you councillor Kits for your thoughtful questions at Planning Committee, and this motion comes from those questions and the clarifications that need to be, that need to be done. And the whereas is are there, and I invite my council colleagues to read them. The substance of the motion is therefore be resolved that council concur in a clarification to the memorandum of understanding to include the following two additional provisions. Clause 4.3, subsequent to the end of the 15-year period, and subclause 42, above, no sublet, assignment, transfer or other changes whatsoever in tenants of record of the tenancy will be recognised, and that the tenant understands, accepts and undertakes any occupant other than the person deemed a tenant by statute or otherwise will not have the right tenure to the tenancy in place of the tenants of record, and be at the end of the 15-year period, during which the suite is designated as a secure, affordable, new housing suite, and those definitions are in the memorandum of understanding, colleagues, on a suite-specific date. It speaks to when, when units become affordable, and continuing until this tenancy is terminated. Prevailing rent controls will govern annual rent increases, but no new construction exemption from rent controls will apply. And for greater clarity, annual rent increases guidelines limit will apply to rent increases regardless of the age of the property. And just take 30 seconds, Mr Mayor. It is because after units that are built.
All right, councillor. So we're going to come back to each motion and speak to it, I just want to get them all tabled so the public know that they're out there. So that's the first one. It's moved by councillor Kits, who we know is there, but having some technical challenges, and seconded by councillor Cloutier. The next motion we received is by councillor Menard, seconded by councillor McKenney. So councillor Menard, if you could just introduce the motion, and we'll come back to debate it afterwards.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'll read a couple of the whereas clauses, you're not all of them. Whereas Planning Committee heard delegations, especially large families, speak to their experience living in townhomes, and they're concerned that the space equivalence of a three-bedroom townhome with their basement, dens, closets and yards, or a two-bedroom, for that matter, cannot be accommodated in a, in a high-rise apartment typology. And whereas it is desirable to ensure large families are not only left with the same number of bedrooms, but also with enough space to accommodate all household members within the new unit, we heard 10 members, family members, living in two and three bedrooms. Therefore, be it resolved that the council directs staff to further engage with the applicant, haringate tenant leadership, including Acorn and the ward councillor, to continue discussions with respect to securing housing replacement for existing tenants in a similar unit and typology as to what the tenants have currently. And that these discussions cause no delay from advancing the current memorandum of understanding and related current planning approvals, but that any agreed-upon changes be brought forward at the time of future rezonings and site plan.
Okay, thank you, and the next motion is by yourself as well?
Yes, thank you. So again, I'll just read a couple of the whereas clauses here to save time. Whereas the city's municipal housing capital facilities bylaw uses average market rent as determined by CMHC as a benchmark for affordable housing, and whereas staff have suggested an alternative approach to determine the maximum rents by unit type by using the average market rent and household income deciles for the city of Ottawa. Whereas there is a concern that the proposed rent levels will not meet the affordability requirements for current and former households living in the area. Whereas further exploration of alternative approaches is warranted to better determine appropriate rent levels for ensuring affordability needs are met. Therefore, be it resolved that council directs city staff to review the methodology for affordable rent calculation at the neighbourhood or ward level, should data be available, for measuring neighbourhood affordability rather than citywide affordability level. And further, be it further resolved that council directs housing and planning services staff to work with the applicant to determine how proposed rents can be made more affordable, and report back to Planning Committee and Council in Q1 of 2022, inclusive of the consideration of amending the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, and the next motion is also by you and councillor McKenney?
Yeah, this is the third and final motion, and it speaks to the main issues that we had been hearing at Planning Committee prior to. I'll just read the, therefore be it resolved that council directs staff to further engage with local residents, community groups, haringate tenant representatives, the applicant and the ward councillor, with respect to increasing the percentage of affordable housing made available within the development through any upcoming zoning and site plan agreement processes. We had heard that 20% was going to be included here under the social contract back from 2019, and we're only seeing 16% at this time. So this gives staff and the councillor some leeway to go back and fulfil that commitment.
Okay, thank you. The next motion is by councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor Cloutier. Councillor Brock.
Thank you, Mayor, good morning to you and everyone. This motion that I'm putting on the floor, okay, that's a different one, is respect to something we heard from Acorn and residents. Are we still talking about that one? Okay, this is, I'm just going to wait for the motion to come up. Okay, thank you. So this motion is about documenting the process that staff went through with respect to the memorandum of understanding and best practices. I'll simply read the therefore clause. That council directs staff to review the Haringate Development Memorandum of Understanding, and report back to council no later than Q2 2022, with respect to best practices, lessons learned, and the challenges negotiating the respective MOU. This is basically first time going through this process, it won't be the last time, and it's good to document what we learned from this. So staff's on board, and that's why it's being put forward today.
Thank you, and the next motion is also by you councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor Cloutier.
Thanks again, Mayor. Yes, the other motion is just to honour requests that we heard from Acorn and other tenants, and that was to provide an opportunity for Hazel View to approach tenants who were evicted a few years ago, and make them aware that there is an opportunity to come back, should they want to come back or move back to the community. So this is just a formal request that Hazel View engage with previous tenants who have accepted, move out compensation packages to inform them of the number of affordable housing units within the development, and that if they qualify, they are welcome to apply for an affordable housing unit within the respective development. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. If we can just test councillor Kits, Mike councillor Kits, can you hear us and respond, please? Can we just hear you, councillor? Can't, no. Okay, it's not working, we'll keep working on that, apologise, might have to put you...
And yes, Mr Mayor, my staff have reached out to councillor Kits to provide the call in details as well, if she wanted to join the sound by phone.
Okay, I apologise to councillor Kits for this issue, we'll try to get it fixed as quickly as possible, and maybe if not, maybe phoning in might be an option, deputy clerk. The next motion on this item is by councillor Kavanaugh, seconded by councillor Cloutier. Councillor Kavanaugh, if you'd like to introduce the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. One of the things we heard at the Planning Committee meeting was related to be going beyond just the issue of affordable housing, but to work on workforce development initiatives, so to, to work on community benefits. So along with, so be it resolved that the ward councillor, in cooperation with Haringate Steering Committee, the Ottawa District Labour Council, the Ottawa Benefits Network, form a group to establish a second memorandum of understanding that will focus on workplace development, including recruiting of trades, training for BIPOC communities, social procurement and social enterprises. And I would ask that other community groups be involved if possible. So this is, this is important in terms of going forward, to give opportunities to those living in these communities, so that there are good jobs available to all. And I would like to throw in, gender equity should also be taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor. Are there any other motions? Okay, so we'll go to councillor Cloutier, who's warned this project includes, for opening remarks, councillor Cloutier, please.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor, thank you very much, Mr Mayor and colleagues. And over the last few weeks, I've had deep and productive conversations with many of you on the Haringate file, specifically regarding the MOU attached to the planning document. As councillors, you've not been as involved in the conversations on this application until the report came out last month, and I understand how much information there is to absorb. And it sure was refreshing to have those nuts and bolts conversations to allow me to focus clearly on what matters most, and to hear what you consider to be the successes, and where there's areas for improvement. And those are the things that we want to do. And though this is primarily an official plan amendment, the major component is the social contract and it offers much needed benefits and protection to the Heron Gate community. And I understand the residents within the community who fear repeat of the twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen evictions. This is a legally binding agreement with protection for current and future Heron Gate residents. And I expect in addition to today, city legal staff will provide us with the clarifications for what will happen to occupied units when the affordable housing timeline expires and about the rent controls that will be included in tenant lease leases, which clearly outline and then protection and rights for when affordable housing tenure expires. And I thank councillor Kits for her motion and for allowing me to second it. After our decision today, I'll be consulting with stakeholders and community partners. And the, the meeting is on September fourteenth. We'll talk about the next steps. We'll talk about the implementation of the MOU if it's approved today by council. We'll talk about ongoing property standards, community engagement opportunities, park improvements and much more. As, as many of you have said, the agreement is a significant milestone in a city which declared a housing and homelessness emergency less than two years ago. It is twenty percent of newly built units that, and that is over a thousand units of affordable housing, far surpassing any other development in the city. And the planning file alone provides general housing stock of more than five thousand new units, which the city drastically needs to help regulate the market rate in Ottawa. It establishes a strong social enterprise framework and made stronger and more present with the motion by councillor Kavanaugh. And I appreciate that she is allowing me to second that motion. I'd also like us around this table to continue building on the framework to find a realistic and an acceptable definition of affordable housing by us for our tenants. And I appreciate the work and the leadership of councillor McKenney and any initiatives she could bring forward to improve those definitions. We want to continue to work with communities and developers to reassure neighborhoods that their city has a framework in place that protects them. And it sets expectations not only for residents, but for us councillors, for developers, so that we're not always rewriting the book every time an established community is facing major changes through development. And thank you councillor Brockington for your motion and for allowing me to second it. And finally, I want to thank the essential voices in the conversations that we've been having for the past four years. The Heron Gate Steering Committee with its many partners, community health organizing and outreach partners, city staff, legal, housing, planning, you have all worked tirelessly, tirelessly on this. And I thank you for your professionalism and your diligence. My council colleagues for your thoughtful dialogue and your contributions. And especially the community of Heron Gate for their patience, their persistence and their resilience. I'll be voting yes to this OPA, knowing full well that the work does not end today. I'm asking you, my colleagues, to do the same and support this application. Merci, Monsieur Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much councillor. Merci beaucoup conseil Cloutier. So we'll go, uh, motion by motion as we receive them and then, uh, on to, um, the main, uh, debate. Uh, we're just going to check again with councillor Kits to see if, uh, because her motion is first, seconded by councillor Cloutier.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Sorry.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, councillor.
I, I was just wondering, Mr. Mayor, if we had questions generally for staff about the whole package. Um, when, when does that fit in?
Well, we should deal with the, the amendments first and then you can go, uh, during an amendment and ask a question of staff or at the end when you wrap up.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, so councillor, uh, Kits. I think the last time we saw you, here we go. You can hear us councillor?
Yes, I can hear you. Sorry, I don't know what's going on, um, but I'm joining you from my phone, so, um, I'll just.
Right councillor, sorry, your, your, uh, your image is sideways that I'm seeing on the screen. There we go. All right. If you'd like to speak, uh, in support of your motion, um, that is seconded by councillor Cloutier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and apologies to everyone. Um, so at committee, I know many of us were, were uncomfortable, very uncomfortable, um, with the question of, of what happens to these affordable units after the fifteen year agreement expires. Uh, we had received a verbal commitment from Hazelview, um, that they wouldn't simply let the affordable units skyrocket in price. Um, but given the history on this file and given the community's understandable trepidation with taking the applicant at its word, uh, a verbal commitment wasn't enough. And I did want to see that in writing, uh, especially because as we learned, units built after November twenty eighteen aren't subject to limited rent increases under the Residential Tenancies Act. Um, so I am moving this motion because my support was contingent on it. But really, this is the result of the hard work of councillor Cloutier. He had, we had some, some good chats over the last week, um, but he was able to push the applicant to clarify the MOU to include provisions that the affordable housing, uh, units would be subject to rent control after the fifteen years. So I am seeking your support on this. Um, and it is my hope that this will provide at least a little peace of mind to the residents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, uh, for the initiative. Uh, questions and comments on this motion? Councillor McKenney on this motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is on, uh, on the motion. And I just wondered, um, why we, um, uh, section, uh, four, three, why we would make it contingent on, uh, the tenant, uh, at this time? I guess, um, I wonder, uh, why we wouldn't try to keep those units affordable in our city? It's five hundred and ten units, uh, in perpetuity. So if, here's my concern is that if you have a family in there now, um, and their kids, you know, uh, age out of the home, um, and, and the parents or the parent, you know, it looks for, um, uh, different size accommodation. Uh, that could happen in three years, five years. So is it my understanding then with this motion that, um, as tenants, these tenants leave, as a city, we will lose access to, uh, five hundred and ten, um, somewhat affordable, uh, units in, uh, in the city?
So, uh, Said, uh, I know you helped with the drafting of the motion. Do you want to, uh, respond to councillor McKenney's question, please?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If councillor, on the one hand, you are correct. After fifteen years of a tenant vacates the unit, the rent can be, can be reset. But for all the tenants today, if anybody vacates any unit and if the landlord wishes to, they could increase the rent to whatever they, they want. Um, so this does provide additional protection for, you know, for, for, you know, another fifteen years plus, um, for those existing tenants so that at the end of the agreement, their rents will not, will not increase beyond what's allowed under rent control in the RTA.
No, I, 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 I understand that and I, I appreciate that. That was actually brought to our attention by, um, some of the, um, tenants in Hazelbean. Actually, they were sending messages and it's why I asked the question when I did. Um, but what, um, four, three says is that if you, if, if it's not this tenant, we will lose that affordable unit. Are you saying we won't, are you saying one family could move out in the fifteen year span and another come in and it stays affordable?
So councillor, if, if one family moves in at fourteen years, it would stay affordable, you know, uh, well into the future. Okay, but if they move out after the fifteen years, the landlord would have the right to, to set the rent. Um, however, typically when we negotiate any affordable housing agreement, there is a time limit that's associated with that affordable housing. So that the city and the developer can, can look at what value that rent reduction is when we're providing those, those units.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that and I understand that that often happens. I don't agree with it, but I do understand that it happens. Anytime you set a term limit, fifteen years in the life of a family is, it's not very long. Fifteen years actually in the life of a tenancy or, or a, a unit that needs to stay affordable, uh, for today, ten years, twenty years, thirty years is not very long. Um, if you look at, uh, you know, Ottawa Community Housing, CCOC, some of these buildings, think of Beaver Barracks. I think they're at fifteen years. Like, it seems like yesterday we built it, but, but it comes, it comes, um, it, it approaches quickly. So I just wonder if the movers of the motion would accept an amendment to take out that, um, that one clause that allows, uh, new tenancy after fifteen years. Let's make Hazelbean, let's, let's ensure that Hazelbean keeps these units. It's not very many and it's not, it's not, it's not going to be a loss to them. Let me assure you, they're, they will, they will break even on these units at, at the very least. So would you accept an amendment that would remove that clause so that it is not, um, it is not contingent on tenancy after fifteen years?
So I see, uh, the seconder has his hand up. Councillor Cloutier?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, uh, councillor McKenney. Uh, the, the agreement, the memorandum of understanding, which has been crafted outside of the Planning Act, calls for, uh, units to be affordable for in some case fifteen years, in some case twenty years. As Said has said, if a tenant moves in at year eleven and that tenant remains there for the following twenty years, the, the, the unit remains affordable. And that was the crux of the, the questions at the planning committee. But to remove that limit of fifteen years, whereas I think as you're proposing, if a per, if a tenant moves in at year seventeen, and no, that is not the agreement with Hazelview. And so, no, that is not a, uh, an amendment that, um, that is, that can be implemented in the context of the memorandum of understanding.
So, so not a friendly amendment?
It is not a friendly amendment.
Okay. Um, okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll pass on questioning now and consider, uh, an amendment, uh, that we can decide on. But I accept that it would not be friendly, uh, to this motion. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Egli, please, on this motion, this amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had a question, but now I have another one based on that exchange. It just occurred. Um, uh, and I guess it's, it's to councillor Cloutier, this question, Mr. Mayor is, as, uh, the, the set work for councillor Kits. Are there one? In the example that you just gave, you made reference to, um, a tenant moving in in year eleven. And so I, I just want clarity here. If, if you moved into one of those units councillor in year eleven, does that mean that there's four more years of affordability there? And that's the cutoff point?
May, Mr. Mayor, can I answer?
Yes, please.
Uh, uh, at minimum, if the tenant remains there, uh, for those, uh, year eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and post fifteen years, that unit would remain at the affordable rate with guideline increases and on an annual basis, but not guideline increases as if the unit was built post November fifteenth, twenty eighteen. Guideline increases as if it was built pre-November fifteenth, twenty eighteen. And as we all know, there is no rent controls on new units, um, as, as dictated by the, uh, the Red Residential Tenancies Act for units that were built after November fifteenth, twenty eighteen. So the answer to your question, uh, councillor Egli, is it remains affordable for the amount of time that the tenant remains in that unit and that is what.
So as long as the tenant moves in within this fifteen year period, however long that tenant stays in there, that unit will remain affordable.
Correct. And as a further clarification, if a tenant moves in at year one, moves out at year seven, another tenant moves in at year seven, stays till, uh, year, uh, twelve, and then another tenant moves in at year twelve and continues on, it is the, it is the unit that remains affordable for minimum fifteen years and in the scenario that we've described post fifteen years.
Yep, and, and I, and I appreciate that clarification. And, and the question I was going to ask, um, is, is sort of related to that. And, and I think you have answered it. I, I had concerns about the people that have already been removed from their homes that have been evicted, that councillor Brockington's motion, I believe, speaks to in part. Um, but if I understand what you're saying, if one of those tenants came forward for one of these units, they would then have a, um, uh, an affordable unit again for a period of at least fifteen years.
We could speak to that when we're discussing councillor Brockington's motion. But, uh, the, the affordability applies to tenants that will, that will, uh, apply for those units.
Okay, no, th- those, those clarifications helped me. Thank you very much. And, and to councillor Kits, I think this, this does help address a concern I had as well, uh, around what happened to those units and what happened to those individuals. So, so thank you for bringing forward this motion.
Great, thank you councillor Egli. Uh, next on this motion, uh, councillor Meehan, please.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think, um, councillor McKenney was, I guess, getting at the fact that, uh, we'd like to have all these units, these five hundred and ten units, uh, affordable housing in perpetuity. At the end of the fifteen years and, and, uh, fifteen years is, um, is, is a, a fair chunk of time. But, um, at the end of fifteen years, we are going to lose, uh, five hundred and ten affordable housing units. So I'm wondering, uh, at that point, if a family, you know, has to, is, is in the home at, at the end of fifteen years, what kind of increase are they going to be subjected to? And are we going to be facing another situation in fifteen years where there's a lot of people who are not going to be able to afford those homes?
Or councillor, uh, Kits or, um, uh, staff or councillor Cloutier, maybe to staff, Said?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A- at the end of the fifteen years councillor, the, um, those tenants will be subject to it rent increases that are allowed under the guideline for, you know, older units or post-November twenty eighteen units is the, is the RTA state today. So that, that will be maybe like a one point eight percent increase, you know, two percent. It's usually, you know, it's pegged to the, um, Consumer Price Index each year. And, um, so they'll be subject to the same increase that they're subject to today in the units that they are already residing.
Was there any discussion at all about, uh, having them, uh, the five hundred and ten units be designated affordable housing units in perpetuity?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to that, uh, the, the MOU really speaks to the negotiated arrangement with Hazelview. And, um, just to, to let members of council know, this is the, um, largest agreement that we've ever secured for affordable housing with a private developer. And, uh, I, it would be unaffordable for them to provide, uh, affordable housing in perpetuity. It was raised, I had that discussion with them and they have informed me that that would not be an acceptable change.
What about a graduated increase then?
Uh, it, what, what is before council with respect to the memorandum is, is the agreement that Hazelview. It's a voluntary agreement and, uh, uh, they, we don't have any tools, um, within the Planning Act to even ask them to provide the thousand, over the thousand units they already are providing. Uh, so, um, what is before council is, is, is the, the best agreement we were able to, to make, uh, before you today.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it for me.
Thanks councillor Meehan. Uh, next on the Kits, Cloutier amendment is councillor Luloff, please.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm, I'm just wondering if I can ask, uh, the mover or the, or the seconder, just to, just to clarify. Um, should there be a, a multi generational family, uh, living in one of these units? Um, if, uh, after the fifteen year period, it is still the same family, um, could, uh, a, a son or a daughter or otherwise, um, have the lease signed over to them? And would that maintain, uh, the, the first lease? Or if, is this not transferable, uh, after the fifteen years?
If I can, uh, I think the motion does speak to the, in, um, the therefore be it resolves that it is the tenant of record that, that benefits from the, um, from the, uh, affordability, uh, pre and post fifteen years. Um, a- and so that would, that is dealt with in the memorandum of understanding, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor and, um.
Not anymore.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry, sorry. Councillor Lula, um, it, it is dealt with in, in the memorandum of understanding. Councillor Lula, um, it, it is dealt with in, in the memorandum of understanding and, and the leases are not transferable or they are transferable as per the rules that, that apply.
Okay. So technically in year fourteen, um, a, you know, of, of the family member who is of record could transfer the lease over to a son or a daughter within, with that, because it's within the fifteen years and that person could carry on until they move out. Is that correct?
As, as per whatever rules any landlord would have at the time with respect to the transferability of leases.
Okay. And so people with a portable housing subsidy could apply that portable housing subsidy to, to rent in these affordable units as well. Is that correct?
I would defer to Said on that.
Said? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes. Yeah. Anybody in receipt of a portable housing benefit could apply them to, to units.
So for, further, further reducing the rent?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm, uh, you know, I'm pleased to see, um, you know, a, a private sector developer helping us out with our, with our housing issues. It was, it was good to hear from staff that this is the, the largest agreement. This, this developer didn't have to do this and, and I just want to express my appreciation for, for them helping us out with, with this issue. I do realize that the agreement isn't perfect, but I'm pleased with the answers that I received today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, next on the motion, councillor Menard, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm just, can you put the, uh, the Clutsey or Kits motion up on the screen again? I, I just wanted to view it. And I, I'm not sure. Oh, here we go to, and Caitlin also, yeah, sent it out here. So just in the, um, on, just looking at the motion, that first four, three that, that councillor McKenney was talking about. So subsequent to the end of the fifteen-year period, no sublet, assignment, transfer or other change whatsoever in tenants of record of, on the tenancy will be recognized. And that the tenant understands, accepts and undertakes that any occupant or other person deemed a tenant by statute or otherwise will not have a right to ensure the tenancy in place of the tenant of record. Okay. So just in terms of councillor Luloff's question about, who's living there? Who's on the lease, who's not on the lease? That will matter at the end of that, that fifteen years and, and what happens to that, to that unit. My understanding is these units that if, if any tenant currently existing in, in Herangate chooses to move into one of these units, those units are considered the affordable housing units for this. It's not on top of the affordable housing units. These, these are being considered as part of the package of affordable housing units. And so just to, to Said, I guess, if, because, because, just, if you could just confirm, these are part of that package of, of units that they're saying would be affordable, the sixteen percent of units that would be affordable in this, in this development?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, these, these are part of the package. So these are new units or fully renovated units that existing tenants will have the right to move into, um, once they're completed.
Right. And if a tenant currently living in Herangate moves into it and then moves out of that unit, say within five years, something life changes, they, they need to move out, what happens to that affordable housing unit?
That, that affordable housing unit would still be subject to rent control under the, the contract that's been signed with, with the city.
So, but it's not the current rents that, that somebody would have been paying there before. It's the, quite frankly, unaffordable rent control that would be brought in there compared to what they're, what they're paying now. So, so the rent for that unit, of course, would go up if somebody else moved in or if there was a change in lease or if they subletted it to a family member, for example, or, or child, that would, their, their rent would increase. And, and I just wanted to, to mention as well that the RTA, the Residential Tenancies Act, after the fifteen years, you're saying that we would, we'd be abiding by that. Is that, is that correct? That the RTA would be the overarching document that would apply?
It, it would, but all, but a section of the RTA that pertains to older units. So that rent control would remain. I think the concern was if tenants moved into newly constructed units, that after the fifteen years, there will be absolutely no rent control for those tenants. So then the landlord could increase the rent from, you know, whether it was fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars and there'd be nothing we can do. That were, that were, you know, suggesting of that after fifteen years, they could only increase the rent by what the RTA would allow as if this were a unit built before November twenty eighteen.
Right. But that is the concern because the RTA, my understanding is allows above guideline rent increases. And they could still be subject to above guideline rent increases, saying, because the same argument that Ms. Nennen has used here, that they can't afford it. Um, they could still apply for an above guideline rent increase.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I should clarify a few things, uh, just with the questions that are on the table. So if, if someone moves out of one of these affordable units, the rent isn't going to increase, it stays affordable.
Sorry, just want to clarify on that one. The rent wouldn't, if somebody was paying fifteen hundred for a three-bedroom right now, as we saw with ten people living in Herangate now, and they moved into that unit, and then they moved out a few years later, that unit wouldn't stay at the fifteen hundred rent. It would increase, my understanding is to what is deemed affordable for the whole city, which would be, I think we were estimating more than two thousand. I, I, I want to get the number right. But it wouldn't stay at that fif- low fifteen hundred that they're paying now in that townhouse, just to be crystal clear on what we're saying.
I can, I can answer that question. So, so for example, if somebody was paying, right now, we're, we're looking at some of the average market rents for tenants, the rents that tenants actually pay in the building. So, you know, around fifteen twenty-four is what, you know, a lot of people in townhomes will be paying right now. If somebody moves into a new unit, the rent would still be fifteen twenty-four. If they move out, the maximum rent that the landlord would be able to charge would be one thousand eight hundred and fifty. But it is a little bit higher, but it will be pegged at that. The market rent for that unit would be two thousand seven hundred. So that's, uh, just to give you an idea of what the difference is. So it's still considerably less than what could be charged to market. And I do recognize that eighteen fifty is, is higher. However, we, we do have to take into account other, you know, other factors, um, you know, as well. And we think that, you know, with housing benefits and other supports, families would still be able to afford those rents moving in.
Yes. So that is what is considered affordable, uh, writ large across the city as a median, but not for this neighborhood. Um, which is again, one of the issues that is, is trying to be addressed in some of these motions. I, I didn't get an answer to the question. If the RTA after fifteen years applies, then I assume above guideline rent increases could also be applied for by this developer at that time.
My understanding is they will be following those guidelines.
Right. So the answer to that question then would be yes.
Mr. Mayor, the answer to be, to, to, to clarify, maybe Mr. Mark could clarify from the memorandum. But the rents will not see significant increases. They will have annual guidelines to follow with respect to what's allowable for rent increases each year. And once the fifteen years is up or the twenty years is up, there's not going to be a huge spike in what the rent will be. It'll continue to be following those guidelines under the Tenancy Act for allowable increases on an annual basis.
Yes. Be good to hear from Mr. Mark because the, the, what I'm saying is that they can apply for an above guideline rent increase after that time. Like anybody can under the RTA. So, so, Mr. Mark, I know, I, I hope you know the, the rules about it. I'm pretty sure you do, but can you clarify that after that time, does this motion lock them in? Or can they apply for an above guideline rent increase under the, which is, is available now under the RTA?
Mr. Mayor, the councillor is correct in that ordinarily a landlord can apply under the Residential Tenancies Act for an increase above guideline. That reference is not, I repeat, is not included in the draft wording of the memorandum of understanding that is before you. It only refers to guideline increases. So my answer to the councillor's question would be no.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you for that. I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just gonna, yeah, I'm just gonna wrap up on it. Oh.
Yeah. Sorry councillor, your time is up and, and I know you'll be speaking many other occasions. So we'll go to the next person who has.
I'll be speaking once more and that's it on this motion, on this, on these items. And I was just going to say, in terms of this motion, uh, we should really be going further.
Like everyone else.
But I do support, I do support, uh, what's being said here. Um, and we need to, I think.
Sorry councillor, thank you very much. Uh, we all have to follow the same rules. Councillor Brockington has the floor now.
Thank you, Mayor. The, um, the, the number of motions on the floor now are very important. This is probably the most important one for me. Further to councillor Meehan's question, I have been asking Ms. Nennen, councillor Clutsey for a couple of weeks now about preserving the affordable housing units in perpetuity, not having a time limit on those affordable housing units. Many of us were asked in the twenty eighteen election, would you support preserving, defending affordable housing units? So when things like this happen, we don't decrease. This isn't going to be decreased tomorrow, but there's a time limit. Now I've heard some information today that, that lead me to ask this question, and that is what happens at the fifteen-year mark and twenty-year mark? And what I've heard today is, don't worry, they will only be permitted to increase the rent by the, basically the rate of inflation. That we heard Hazel View at committee say, I'm not going to take an affordable housing rent and jack it up to the average market rent in Ottawa. We're, we're not going to do that. And I think I've heard today that they're not permitted to do that, that they would be constrained by inflationary increases. So I just, I would want clarification on that point. And then as a follow-up to, to understand what I'm thinking my context is, is then what, what's the difference? If we don't preserve these units in perpetuity and we're saying, well, don't worry, after the fifteen or twenty-year time period expires, there can only go up by rate of inflation. Well, isn't that what's happening now anyway? Aren't, aren't our affordable housing units permitted every year to go up by the rate of inflation? And if the answer is yes, then, then what really changes? What will change after fifteen or twenty years? So maybe Ms. Nennen, you can clarify for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you, you, there will be, through the zoning procedures, applications through site plan, there'll be continued discussions. And if the city has incentives that they're able to provide to this private developer, there may be other discussions that could take place. But with respect to, um, you know, expecting that a private developer is going to provide affordable housing in perpetuity is, is, is unrealistic. And, uh, we don't, we've never acquired that. That's completely outside of the Planning Act. This is, uh, just want to reiterate, this is not social housing. And in fact, I think Said could speak to how good this agreement is with respect to some of our own programs. But, um, it, it would, it would be unrealistic. But this, this motion speaks to ensuring, uh, that there are nominal increases that continue. Uh, so I think for councils, uh, uh, purpose, this, 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 this has been the strongest agreement we've been able to acquire. And we have a number of other wards and a number of applications that continue to come in. And I really do think we need to focus on, on, on other, um, applications and opportunities that are coming up and use this as, as a baseline of, of how well we've been able to acquire this number. We've got over a thousand units under this agreement. This is, this is a landmark. This is a home run with respect to affordable housing and the number of units that we're providing. This developer could build five thousand units approximately on their own, uh, with their existing zoning. So, you know, we've, we've, we've acquired a significant amount here with respect to their density bonusing. So, um, I, I hope that answers your question, councillor.
I appreciate, look, this, this motion is better than no motion. So I hope my colleagues see that this does get us to a better place. What I think many of us are concerned about is what happens at that fifteen or twenty years. So just my final question to clarify, at the end of the fifteen or twenty-year period, can Hazel View increase the rent by more than rate of inflation? And what gives them the authority or power to do so?
Mr. Mark, did you want to have the final word on this one?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I certainly will not claim to have the final word, uh, but, uh, if a tenant moves out after the end of the, the end of the period, then, uh, the landlord is entitled to set the rate at what the landlord wishes to set the rate. That is the law today. Uh, and that would continue to be the law after the end of the period.
Okay. Excellent clarification. So we have protection for fifteen or twenty years. And colleagues, what happens after that point, once a tenant moves out, dies, no longer lives there, is we have a unit that is deemed affordable now and it may not be affordable at that point. And that's why I'm concerned. As we have affordability for ten, I'm sorry, for fifteen or twenty years, that changes once a tenant moves out after that period. And that's why I'm concerned because we're not protecting the affordability long term and that needs to be our goal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, next on the motion is councillor Gower, please.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, the, a few of the previous, um, speakers have used the word perpetuity or asked about questions in perpetuity. Mr. Mark, um, has, I think, one of the most creative and nimble minds in municipal planning, probably in the province of Ontario. Mr. Mark, is there anything that you're aware of? You must have given this thought. Is there any mechanism that our council can use to require a guaranteed affordable housing units in a private development in perpetuity? Anything in any Planning Act or RTA?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Stedden has already provided that response. This is a voluntary agreement. Uh, this is not something we could require by law.
Can we or do we require perp- in perpetuity agreements for our, uh, public housing investments, community housing investments?
That would be for Mr. Say to answer, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the question. We, the only way we could really do that is through provincial legislation, uh, you know, under the Housing Services Act. That's the closest we can get. But even in that case, uh, most of the housing agreements do have an expiry date.
Even in the, even in the public, public investments, public housing? Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I, I just heard, uh, something that I think is, is really important. This isn't social housing, uh, we were just told. And, and we're absolutely right. Uh, the, the developer is not building social housing. Their interest is in profit and profit only, unlike our, uh, not-for-profit sector partners. The, um, the effect, however, of not requiring that this housing be affordable in a much longer term is that when it moves to market pricing, we are going to have to try to build that much more social housing. This puts the burden on the Ottawa taxpayer, on the Ontario taxpayer to make up the gap of the housing that we're losing. It is currently market affordable housing with the help of programs at the city of Ottawa. But at the end of fifteen years, it will no longer be. And in fact, for those tenants who are moving into affordable new units, um, today, who are not currently tenants of Hazel View, I think there's a question as to whether this is affordable at all. Are we using the right language? When a three-bedroom unit is allowed to be, um, affordable to only the fifth decile of income earners, when it's affordable only to households that are earning ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, I, I'm not even sure we should be talking about affordable housing. But certainly, when it goes to fully market pricing, these are hundreds of units that we know we're going to have to find a way to fund publicly. And that's a, that's a big burden on the Ottawa taxpayer. Uh, and it may be fifteen years down the road, but as councillor McKenney said, that's coming up fast. And, and I don't think that we have any certainty that we're going to have the means to be able to make up that new gap in the market. And, and we are only going to perpetuate the housing crisis in which we find ourselves today. I'm going to vote for this motion. It is, it is better. It is an improvement. But it's, it's not what we actually need in order to be able to try to really address the affordable housing crisis. We are going. We are going to lose housing that is affordable to people, and we're going to, maybe not today, but tomorrow, have to make up that gap. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Conseil, Flory, s'il vous plaît. So cette motion de councillor Kit, c'est clusé.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have questions to staff, and, and I'm coattailing on councillor Leeper's point there around social housing, because if you split affordable housing, you lose sense of how affordability is achieved. Ultimately, affordable housing is to those who can, who can, it's the income level of an individual, and it's their ability to pay a rent. So when we start skinning of like, oh, this is social housing versus this is private housing, we lose sense of that. So I'm going back to the source of all of it. So Said, can you clarify, if I'm a resident of Timber Creek, Herren Gate, prior to the demos, do I get to re-enter the community with the same amount of bedrooms from my unit at the same price as the way I left it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor, are you referring to tenants who live there now, and they've been?
No, I'm, I'm saying those. Oh, sorry, I, I lagged. What were you saying, Said?
I'm just, I was just asking if you're referring to tenants who currently live at Herren Gate and will be relocated.
Well, no, I'm not there yet. I'm, I'm saying those who've moved.
I think you're frozen, councillor. Councillor Flory, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. We hear you now.
You can hear me?
Photo. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, really, the memory on the computer is not great. So Said, I, I'm coming back to this. So I, I, I have sort of three questions. So the focus is, if I lost my unit, if I, I moved out, took a basic package, can I re-enter one of those new quote-unquote affordable units at the rate I left it?
I think the, the answer to that, and, and Tim Mark or Liam may want to correct me, but the answer is, is most likely not at the exact same rate that they'd left it, because they did receive compensation when they had left the unit. But Timber Creek is, they're willing to, to make those units available at the affordable rate, which is the average market rent we had provided in the, in the MOU.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, there's one caveat I would put on that, is that if you move, and if you're in a unit that is to be renovated, and you move out for the renovations to take place, yes, you can move. But the section fifty-three of the Act, which I addressed in the memo, does allow you to move back in at the same, same rate that you used to have.
That is correct. Thank you, Tim.
That's helpful. So how many, how many of, how many would we, would be in that situation? Do we have a number of units?
I believe it's about four hundred and twenty-five households are in that situation.
Okay.
That would need to be relocated.
Okay, appreciate that. And then those who are currently in Timber Creek and will be moving to a new unit within Timber Creek, they maintain their current, their current lease, I guess, so they're, they're protected in that environment?
That's correct, yes.
And, and is that, does that, is that captured in the thousand six hundred units, or is that a different group apart from that?
No, it is captured in the thousand units, yes.
Okay, and then, so, so we have a group of four hundred tenants, we have the existing tenants. And then when we say, oh, there's a thousand six hundred affordable units, so we're talking about new availability. Said, I'm, I'm looking to you, folks that are today on the waiting list for an affordable unit, would they be good candidates from a financial point of view to integrate what, what is called affordable housing here?
Okay, thank you, councillor. Some of the, some of the households on the centralized waiting list for below-market rent housing would be, you know, suitable, even some families in the emergency shelter system with a housing benefit would be able to afford some of these units as well. So we can, we can look at that. The, the other thing I, I would point out, when it comes to looking at, you know, affordable housing in general, it wasn't that long ago where we weren't getting any rental housing built whatsoever. So there is another benefit to this development, and that is, we are getting a lot of purpose-built rental housing. And a significant portion of that will be affordable housing, and we're protecting the rights of the existing tenants to stay on-site, even if they have to be relocated, so they could, both their rents will stay the same. I just, I just wanted to, to remind councillor of that, one of those points.
I appreciate that. Can you, can I just come back to the point you just made? So if, if I'm one of the twelve thousand people on a waitlist on a city's affordable housing waitlist, can you walk me through what that looks like to move into that, to those units? And, and what, what that, I mean, you, you've done the, the numbers, and you know how much we can give in allowances and so on. What does that ultimately look like?
Right, okay, thank you, councillor. So somebody on our waitlist, they, if they're, if they're eligible for, for example, the Canada-Ontario housing benefit, they would be given a portable housing allowance that would help them bridge the gap from what they could afford to what the rent actually is. And that's for the average market rent unit only, not the, not the other units, but that's how we would help them bridge the gap.
I'll be supporting the motion. I, I understand that downfalls of the, the challenge of the fifteen-year, or even the portions of the twenty years, I think our battle here is not with our colleagues, it's with the province reintroducing rent control. I think that's the fundamental of this issue. We're, we're trying to stopgap and patch a number of failed policies here. If we had rent control, we could focus on affordability, and then once the renters would move in, that affordability would be maintained based on rent control. So I'll support the motion. I, I, I recognize the, the shortfalls of it in, in bringing some perpetuity elements to it, and transfers and so on. But, but I, I do think that we need to look to the province to reintroduce rent control in this environment.
They'll see. Councillor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you to councillor Kit for bringing this motion forward, and to my colleagues for some really great questions. It, it is a bit confusing to understand how it works with people coming and going, because people don't just stay for fifteen years. And I, I think the point was raised about what, what happens after fifteen years. And we're talking about this agreement as one that's a landmark in terms of that this is the most we've got ever. And we, we have to have more. And we're making it up as we go, because there's, there wasn't a rulebook in place on how to get affordable housing. We keep pushing on it. And that is important. We have to keep pushing on it, and I see it as at one level, and that we get more. What I want to know from staff is, how can we keep track of this? Because fifteen years can go like that. We, we plan fifteen years ahead for transit, for other things. And as these agreements come through, and I expect there'll be more, if we can have reports back on, on how it's going, because, or, or when things are going to come out of no longer being affordable, so that we have a tracking that by whatever, twenty thirty or whatever, we know where we are and what we, what we have to look at. I just want to know in terms of these agreements, so that we know where to push and what to do. Is that possible? I'm, I'm not thinking necessarily it needs to be an amendment or anything, but just an agreement from staff that, that we will look at this and report back to council on how we keep going forward, so that we're tracking as things, you know, in fifteen years. We don't, we don't want it to go poof. We, 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 I expect we're going to have more agreements, and that we're going to have, I don't know what scale, they'll probably be a lot smaller, but they do add up. And so I just want your comments on that.
Mr. Mayor, I know for this particular file with Hazel View, they are willing to provide annual reports on, on how things are tracking with respect to their units. And within the planning department, we do keep records of, of the agreements that we make and the, and the number of units. So we, we could likely take direction, I'll, hopefully, Mr. Willis will be okay with this, just in terms of our annual reporting to council, we can potentially add that to our annual reports.
Thank you. And, and the point was that we know that these expire in such year and where we are at that point, so that, and hopefully, more agreements will overlap. So I think that's what we need, is to see where we are in terms of those overlaps as agreements go. Will that be reflected?
Run mute.
Mr. Mayor, so the question, councillor, is whether or not we would have overlaps. I'm just not sure I'm clear. So we, we, we will report out on you know, number of units and how, how we are tracking. We'll have to set something up. This is new. So we will, I think our direction needs to be that we'll undertake to review how we will report back. Certainly, we can undertake your, your feedback. But we will need to sort out how we want to be able to report back. That's meaningful.
Thank you. Yeah, in twenty thirty-six, fifteen years from now, what is, you know, we, we have this, we know that's when things are going to expire. Further agreements will have different ones, so that we're tracking where we have to keep pushing for more affordable housing and where we are at different points, is what I'm trying to get at.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank, just as a little historic note, I think councillor Kavanaugh, you were the first that were able to get a private developer to agree to, I believe it was eight percent housing, affordable housing at Bayshore. So you set the the, the city on the process to continue to follow your good example in that particular community. To wrap up, councillor Kits, would you like to wrap up on your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and thank you to my colleagues for the great discussion that resulted from the questions and, and the clarity that was provided by staff. I hear the additional concerns, you know, of course, securing these units in, in perpetuity would be ideal, but I think we have to remember that, that this, as we heard, is a negotiation with a private sector developer. And I, I believe that the current residents of Herren Gate, those who, who brought these concerns forward and will be moving into some of these units, you know, hopefully will have additional peace of mind that this aspect of security around the rent control of their units after the, the fifteen years expires, it is now in writing in the MOU, which was a concern that, that a lot of us shared and, and was resulting from the community bringing that forward. So again, thank you to councillor Clutsey. He was the one who did the legwork to getting this, this negotiation, this motion together. And I do ask all my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I, I also encourage people to support the Kits Clutsey motion. I want to thank councillor Kits for the initiative, and councillor Clutsey for good example of working together to come up with a very positive solution. So on the motion, yays and nays on the Kits Clutsey motion.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Luloff?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor DeRouze?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Conseil Flery?
Wait.
Councillor Meehan?
Yes.
Councillor King?
No.
Conseil Clutsey?
Wait.
Councillor Moffat?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Elshantiri?
Yes.
Councillor McKennie?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Suts?
Yes.
Councillor Egli?
Yes.
Councillor Kits?
Yes.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Dudos?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Twenty-two yays, two nays?
Okay, thank you. The next motion is by councillor Menard, seconded by councillor McKennie. Councillor Menard, if you want to introduce and speak your motion or ask any questions.
Yeah, I think I'll just speak one more time on this item, and it's to the three motions in front of us, and then the, the final item. This is, this is the largest mass eviction in, in recent Canadian history. And it has been widely condemned by representatives of the United Nations. It is the most densely populated neighborhood in the Ottawa Gatineau region. A vast majority of residents here are racialized, with the majority of the children here, sixty percent of them living in poverty. There were previous commitments that were made, or promises, which are not being met here. Those promises and those discussions were being had in twenty nineteen and later. Around twenty percent of the units that would be considered affordable housing, but that number has not been met in this agreement. There's also been comments here today that, you know, this developer doesn't have to do anything, that we are somehow lucky to be getting this. And that's not quite accurate. They are receiving one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven more units than they would have with the amendments we've given them. It's important for council members to know that the so-called affordable housing units being created here based on the definitions we have, which one of the motions speaks to, for only fifteen to twenty years, are in fact less affordable than the current market rents being paid by tenants and the community that exists there. And so current residents here, and I used to live in one of these townhomes, so I know, they are currently living in larger spaces. Oftentimes with a yard or extra, some extra rooms, and that would be, then would be afforded to them in a small high-rise apartment. So that's what they're going to be getting is, is a three-bedroom, smaller apartment versus what they have now. And that's what this first motion speaks to. It is about asking staff, it doesn't compel anybody, but it asks staff to go back and negotiate. We heard from families of ten living in a three-bedroom. So it's not going to work for them that they, that family's not going to move into a three-bedroom apartment, high-rise, with, with much less space than they have right now. So this is really dividing this community. And the agreement in front of us does set expectations, as has been said, but our expectations, given what has occurred here, should be greater. We should expect more. I understand this is on a transit-oriented development area. More is coming for that in the next official plan, including inclusionary zoning, which more would be expected under that policy. Same with our anti-displacement policy that is coming. So we're a matter of months away from those types of things. And so the, the motion in front of you now, the one I'm speaking to, this is about asking staff to go back with the ward councillor and the community to negotiate some more, so that people that are living in a current townhome can receive a townhome as affordable, not just an apartment building. The other two motions speak to the definition of affordability and ask staff to come back, which we had good conversations with the planning committee about. Gives us some more options for them to come back and give us what, what is, how do we determine affordability in a community that is not near the average or the median for the rest of the city, such, such as this, this community. That's the third motion. The second motion speaks to asking Housing and Planning Services to work with the applicant to determine how proposed rents could be made more affordable for this, for this community, or report back to committee and council in Q1 of twenty twenty-two. And so I, I hope you can support all three of these motions. I still have trouble with the overall deal. As I say, more could be done here with, within a matter of months with the new official plan and what we're talking about, other policies. We have ninety-nine-year deals in Toronto. And in Toronto, they got ninety-nine years of affordable housing. So, and in, in Ottawa, we've got twenty-five years of affordable housing in several developments on Booth Street and otherwise. And that's through private developers. Canada Lands negotiated, private developers buy it, twenty-five years. So those are being negotiated right now. This is not some breakthrough. It, it is, it is a deal that needs more work and more collaboration between current tenants, the property developer, the ward councillor, and city staff. And so that's what these three motions ask to do. They don't compel, but they ask you to come back and to keep negotiating on the items that we heard for from committee. I hope you can support all three of these motions. Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Egli, please.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I apologize, councillor Egli. Are we going one, I, I know councillor Menard talked about three motions, but we're actually going one for one, right? Just to clarify.
That's correct. He just committed not to speaking.
Okay, I apologize. Just, thank you.
Councillor Egli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and I have two questions. And again, I'm, I'm not sure which motions particularly they, they referred to, because councillor Menard spoke to all of his at once, but we have heard a couple of times now, this, this divide, if you will, between a promise of twenty percent of affordable housing units, yet only sixteen percent have been delivered. My understanding from discussions with councillor Clutsey is that, in fact, twenty percent is what was promised, and twenty- and twenty percent is going to be what is being delivered. I'm wondering if there's anybody on the staff side that can can confirm the the percentage point of of affordable units. Is it sixteen percent? Or or is it, as discussed earlier on, the 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 full twenty percent at this point?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to clarify. So there's approximately in in total with this development, sixty-four hundred units. Of those sixty-four hundred units, sixteen percent of affordable housing will be provided. However, if you look at it from the perspective of the number of additional units they're getting, so they're what what we would call in planning their density bonusing. So they've got as-of-right zoning for approximately five thousand units right now without having to provide us anything. So they are actually, in fact, close to thirty-five percent affordable housing if you're just looking at those density bonusing amount of units over and above their existing as-of-right.
Okay, maybe I'll ask this question a different way because you've given me three different percentages now. What is the total number of units that will be affordable at the end of this?
One thousand and change.
Okay, and and is that what they went into the discussions with? Do they always say we're going to give you a thousand and change, or has that gone up, or has that gone down from what their original position was?
We, uh, Mr. Mayor, we've been negotiating for four years on on this file and councillor Cloutier and and city staff and Hazelview and and other stakeholders have been highly involved in these discussions and councillor Cloutier has been driving these negotiations with the support of city staff and we have really felt very confident that what we're here in front of council today is the the best offer. It may not be twenty-five years, it may not be in perpetuity, but the value, the value of the number of units and the, so the affordable housing value that council is getting is better than any other private deal you've seen today. And it's been mentioned, we're we're learning, we're going to build on this and there'll be other discussions and other files that we'll be working on. But this is, it it really is the the best value that we're bringing forward to you today.
And and while I appreciate all that, that's that's not the question I asked. The question I asked is, you said it's a thousand and change in terms of the number of affordable units. My question to you is, were we able through negotiations to bring them above their original position in terms of what they were prepared to provide in total number of affordable units?
Yes.
And and what is that delta? What did they start at? What was their opening position as to how many affordable units they put on the table versus what we what we have right now?
That I'm going to ask potentially, oh, oh, here, I got the answer, thank you. I miss you. Originally, it was two hundred and fifty units.
And we're now up over a thousand. Okay, no, that's, thank you. Thank you for that clarity.
Great question.
The 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 other the other question I have is, one of the motions speaks to directing staff to to go off and figure out how to make these these existing, these these proposed units rather, more affordable. Now, I'm directing this question to Said, who who was very helpful in the discussion last week. Said, I thought you had said in that discussion that we had, and again, thank you again for that, for that, for those discussions, that that was already the intention of staff. Staff already intended to to look at the landscape and find ways to reduce the the what what we're now calling affordable rent, find a way to bring that down. So in that regard, if if I'm accurate in what I recollect, our discussions were about, I just wonder if this motion is or that, I don't know if it's motion one, two, or three of councillor Menard, whether that motion is in fact necessary if staff has already undertaken to do that work.
And thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. We do contemplate this in section six of the MOU, where we talk about tax deferral abatement and development charge credits. What we're really implying there is that we want to leave the door open to continue to work with Hazelview as they come in with each, you know, pending site plan or zoning amendment application to look at, you know, what can we do to to further reduce the rents in these buildings, to make them more affordable? So as we stated at planning committee last week, you know, this is the baseline for us and we will, you know, through this MOU, it it gives us a good starting point. We know what the upper thresholds are, we've agreed to those. And then when we come in with any type of program or incentive, similar to, you know, the 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 Porsche dealership, you know, tax, you know, a grant that was that was provided. So, you know, in our work plan, we're looking at a community improvement plan, similar one for affordable housing through the city, so that could potentially apply here. But but again, we didn't want to put any incentives on the table now, this early in the process, because we're not looking at a site plan, we're not looking at specific units. We wanted to sort of hold those cards for future discussion.
So if if it's contemplated, as you say, in section six of the MOU, and you've set out what the intentions of of staff are and some of the potential tools, does, and again, I I apologize, I don't know if it's motion one, two, or three, I don't have them on the screen in front of me from councillor Menard, does that motion in any way add to your toolbox? Does it, does it help staff to have that motion passed, or or is that something you were going to be doing in any event?
Thank you, councillor. No, this is something we would do in any event.
Okay. And so I'll I'll just leave it at that and as we get to the individual motions and the per on the screen of a better sense of whether we're referring to one, two, or three in terms of the vote, but but thank you for that clarification, Said, and and all your good work on this file.
Yeah, thank you councillor Egli. We're going to deal with each item individually. So next for this motion by councillor Menard and McKenney is councillor McKenney, please.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a question on each of the motions and then I have comments on the entire application. So am I just, you want me to come back on three times plus wrap-up? Or or should I ask my questions on the three motions and then come back for wrap-up?
Yeah, I think on the wrap-up, we'll deal with the overall wrap-up at the end.
Okay.
Speak to each individual motion and have any questions or comments now on on the first motion that you and councillor Menard have put forward.
So so just to clarify, I don't mean to be difficult, but I have a question on each motion. Should I just get those out of the way now, or do you want me to just go with another one?
You want to speak to each motion, you should deal with one at a time.
Okay, okay, I'll I'll deal with the first then. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So with respect to unit type, unit size and and typology, I just, when I'm looking at this motion, it's, you know, that one of the clear concerns that we heard from families, and and these are mostly families that that we're dealing with, was that as it's been suggested, to move from, you know, a three-bedroom townhome, you know, into a three-bedroom apartment without a yard, without you know, the amenities that are required for a family, place to put your stroller, place to put your bikes. You know, when we're when we're building high-rises, you know, we often refer to them as vertical subdivisions. If you want families to live in them, you have to have the amenities that that are required. So again, that they're big enough, that they're spacious enough, that there's some outdoor space, that there's place to to store your everyday, you know, needs, strollers, grocery bags, whatever. So was it ever discussed? Did did we actually request from Hazelview, and I know I was calling it Hazel Dean before, that's because of my years working for the Canada Council way back, Hazel Dean in my mind, but Hazelview. Was it ever discussed with Hazelview? Did 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 we as a city say to Hazelview at any point, sure, you know, moving them into three-bedroom for three-bedroom, but we want to ensure that they have the amenities that they need to function as a family for the better. Yeah, this is for kids' mental wellness, this is for people's well-being, this is so that people will be able to to stay in those units. I just wonder if that was ever asked of Hazelview, and if it was, what was their response back?
Mr. Mayor, that's a really great question that I'd like to respond to. Just to clear up this 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 discussion, Hazelview has committed, we've had those discussions, and I don't know where the misinformation has come from. However, if you are a family that's living in a three-bedroom townhouse and you're going to be displaced as part of this construction process, you will be provided a three-bedroom townhouse. You won't be displaced from your townhouse and put into an apartment. So you will get like-for-like, plus or minus. Let's say your backyard was a hundred square meters. Well, it might be seventy-five square meters. I'm just, you know, it might not be exact for exact, but you're not going to be displaced and put into a one-bedroom apartment if you're in a three-bedroom townhouse. So it'll be townhouse for townhouse. I hope that helps clarify, councillor.
Yeah, I mean, and I and I always understood that it was not going to be a three-bedroom townhouse for one bedroom apartment, but the concern was really size and typology. So then this motion then, what's being asked for, you have no issues with and you agree with it, and so does Hazelview. Is that?
Uh, I would say that I I, from the staff's perspective, I don't see that this motion is is required. This is where this is what is going to be taking place. I I don't think it's necessary that we continue the dialogue with the therefore be resolved. So this just to confirm, this is how the process is going to go and this is how Hazelview has already indicated.
And it and is that in the MOU? Could you just point me to to where that is specified in the MOU?
Mr. Mayor, I'll have to verify that. Okay, section five.
Okay. I will go back and take a closer look at that and and come back on if I have further questions, but thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all for this motion.
Okay. On this motion, councillor Cloutier, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And and I guess I, just a little bit further to 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 the questions we've had so far. Can we hear from staff about their, get them to comment, Ms. Snedden or or Said with respect to the three motions? Can I get the staff's perspective on these three motions? And then I would like to comment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, staff appreciates the the efforts that have gone into the motions. I would just like to reiterate from planning staff's perspective, staff are not supporting the motions, staff are supporting the MOU that's been negotiated and the recommendations that are in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And and Mr. Mayor, if I, I'll be commenting on the three motions and I I do not support them. The 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 three motions, with respect to number one, as as has been said, the MOU says same, similar unit, same size, same rent for for tenants that are being displaced as part of the phase development. And and so I would, I would encourage that that we keep that in mind, and that is indeed in the MOU. With respect to the second motion, I think staff in the past have talked about using the methodology with respect to neighborhood or ward levels and how difficult that is and how that is not not currently applicable, implementable with respect to to an agreement like this. Could be in the future if 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 the rules change, and and I encourage my council colleagues in the agreements that they'll come forth in the coming years to to continue to explore that. And also on motion number two, just inclusive of the consideration of amending the memorandum of understanding. The memorandum of understand that is before you is the one that has been negotiated over the past four years. It is comprehensive. It is reflective of the needs of the residents of Heron Gate who want housing that is renewed, that is affordable, that is comfortable, that is safe, and they want to maintain their 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 community. And with respect to the third motion by councillors Menard and McKenney, again, it seems to perpetuate a continuing discussions, discussions that will occur because it's an official plan amendment, zoning is coming, site plan is coming, and certainly in that context, there will be those discussions. But but at its core, it says, we don't like a thousand twenty units, we would have rather had, I don't know, what's the number? We're building five thousand new affordable housing, five thousand new units, a thousand twenty of them will be affordable housing units. That number is not the right number. I look forward to the agreement brought by by others, and councillor Menard, you 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 said in your in your introduction to the motion, some of this, we we should wait because some of this will be in the official plan. I'll remind you that I think it's the official plan that I I've heard some persons on council say that should be delayed. We want to implement some of the provisions of the new draft official plan, but let's delay the draft official plan. We are dealing with the official plan as we have it now with the Planning Act as we have it now. And the improvements that will be brought forth as part of the new official plan that hopefully we'll be dealing with in October will further inform future agreements. And again, I look forward to to seeing those future agreements that have more than the twenty percent that we have here. Councillor Kavanaugh, you 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 attained eight percent in Bayshore, and and that is not a criticism. We are all dealing with with that, with a a lack of framework. And so I appreciate what you have created. I appreciate other affordable housing, and this is twenty percent in Heron Gate.
One minute.
With respect to what councillor McKenney said, yes, we need units. Yes, we need new units for families to move into that are appropriate for the families in Heron Gate, current and future, so that they could raise their families and live their lives. We need housing stock. We need it now, and that is what this, at its core, again, I will remind my colleagues that that is what this this application provides. Those are all my scribbles for now.
Right, thank you. Councillor Kits, please, on the first Menard McKenney motion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have I have one question with respect to this motion. Committee, I asked the applicant very pointedly. I said, yes or no answer, are you willing to negotiate further with the community and the ward councillor? And the answer I got was no. So perhaps staff, Leanne, can answer this question. I mean, what happens if the applicant is simply not amenable to renegotiating?
So, Mr. Mayor, we've negotiated this MOU for the official plan amendment at this at this stage. If through the zoning and site plan application phases, the city is able to provide further incentives to help incentivize this private developer, there could be further discussions around what's being provided right now. But in terms of not providing any incentives, this is a completely voluntary program. We have no legislative tools under the Planning Act to be able to even ask them to provide the thousand that they have. You know, it's understandable that this MOU is is what they are prepared and what we've negotiated to support.
Okay, so so perhaps time for another yes or no question. Very simply, could we lose the the gains? And while not perfect or better than where we started, could we lose the gains we have obtained so far in this process?
If this, if this is not approved today and if it's not supported as it's presented, absolutely, Hazelview has indicated that, you know, you can only, you know, take so much in terms of what they're able to financially be able to afford to provide. And if we go past that mark, which beyond this MOU, they've expressed would be going past what they can afford to build here.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Uh, thank you councillor. Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Sorry, I I I'm just struck by the the previous comment by Ms.
Sorry, I'm just struck by the previous comment by Ms. Snedden in terms of, you know, the affordability of this deal for the developer. I just, we're not talking about what is affordable to the developer. This is what the developer feels that they can accomplish while still making the profit that they intend to make in this development. You know, it's, we're talking about affordability of housing to people who actually can't afford to pay more than they are paying for their housing today versus the affordability of whether or not profit can be maintained at the desired level on the part of investors. So it's important to keep that in mind as we continue this discussion. I just wanted to clear up maybe what I'm hearing as inconsistency in what I've heard this morning. I'm hearing that these motions are not necessary because staff intend to continue to try to press where they can to get better. But I'm also hearing that staff support the current deal. Is it staff's intention to try, if we can, to get a better deal?
Mr. Mayor, no, it is not. We have an MOU that is before you. The only thing that would be discussed in future would be if the city was able to provide incentives to create more additional space for affordable housing.
So the opposition that staff have to passing these motions is you don't want to be directed to try to get better.
I don't really think that's what Ms. Snedden said.
I would like to understand the opposition to, on the part of staff then.
Mr. Mayor, we've been negotiating this file for four years. We have 23 wards in this city. We have other files and applications we need to deal with. Our application numbers are up 20% as we are today. We don't not have the staff capacity to continue these negotiations and discussions. From the staff's perspective, we have worked very closely with the ward councillor and have full support for what this deal provides members of council. And this is our position.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, may I add to Ms. Snedden's comments? Because I want to add important flavor to this. We are talking about a voluntary memorandum of understanding that only exists because we have two willing parties to talk about it, which is the city and the developer. The developer already has rights to go to the Ontario Lands Tribunal for failure to make a decision by the city. If the city passes motions that create no end date to the discussion, the developer could use that as an excuse to go to the OLT. And the OLT would have no regard for the MOU at all because it's not a land use planning matter under the Planning Act. And we could very well risk losing everything we've gained in an OLT decision that would not cover this at all. So staff's concern is if we don't create an end to the discussion, we risk losing it all. That's our concern. That's why Ms. Snedden made the remarks she did.
So that is helpful in terms of clarifying some, what I think I've been hearing this morning as inconsistency. If we pass this OPA today, there aren't going to be further discussions about trying to get a better deal. This is the deal we have unless we are able to offer up incentives that will cost the Ottawa taxpayer money that will convince the developer to provide for a higher level of affordability, more units, or what I would say, greater fidelity between the units that people have today versus what they might be able to get in the new built form. That is helpful clarity. And I guess I would ask my colleagues to support, and I won't speak to each of the three motions, but I would ask my colleagues to support councillor Minard's motions because the audience for this debate is not just us. And it's not just the tenants who are currently at Heron Gate. It is, it is the developers who are going to continue to come into Ottawa and buy up the real estate that is currently market affordable to people today and convert it into more expensive housing. I don't want there to be any mistake that that is the dynamic that is happening right across North America right now. There is a housing shortage in most major North American municipalities. And in the wake of that housing shortage, there is the opportunity for profit. And large companies like Hazel View are swooping in, and they're buying what they tell their investors are underperforming assets. And they are squeezing greater profit out of them by redeveloping them. And the message that we have the opportunity to send to those developers today in this debate is that Ottawa City Council, Ottawa City staff are going to try to do better. We may not have the tools that we need from the province, and I'm cynical that the province is going to give us those tools. But we have the opportunity today to say, our cities are not going to be bought up by large developers backed by billions of dollars of investment to turn housing that is affordable for people today into a commodity from which the greatest possible profit can be squeezed. And when we talk about, is this deal affordable? If this deal is affordable to the developer, that leaves me queasy. We're not talking about the same affordability. We're talking about the affordability of housing, which is a human right to the residents of Ottawa versus the profits that can be made by speculative, large multinational firms. Colleagues, we have to ask our staff to try to do better in the wake of, or in the absence of any further help from our federal and provincial partners. Please, let's support councillor Minard's motion, councillor McKennie's motion, and demand better of these large developers who can almost certainly afford it. None of them are going to lose housing if a better deal is sought. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McKennie, you've spoken on this. You'll have to speak on the next motion. Councillor Fleury has the floor.
We reviewed all the components of this agreement, but I have a question that's not clear in my head.
... advantage of or are able to access. We know the shortfalls of that program as it relates to ensuring that members that of our community that are on the social housing waiting list do get kind of a plugin to the affordable unit. So I would like some clarity on, within the agreement that you're bringing forward to us, are the affordable units outside of those who have previous or existing tenancy rights at that location ensuring that they're coming from our waiting lists?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that question. Councillor, we can't answer that at this time. We're not aware of, you know, whether or not the applicant is actually going to agree to take on any financing or special programs from CMHC for this development. I think they've mentioned that they've made an application, but they have not, you know, they have not come to any specific agreement on, you know, accessing our CFI or any other type of federal program.
What would need to be amended? Oh, sorry, I got feedback here. What would need to be amended in the agreement to ensure that the identified affordable units? I think there's around, from what I, from our previous conversation earlier today, it was around 400. What would it take to ensure that those 400 units that are affordable, that are, you know, unassigned, come to, for those who are on our current waiting list for affordable housing?
Yeah, thank you, councillor. The applicant has already reached out to discuss the process that we'd undertake. So we, you know, we do have other examples of how we could structure the intake of tenants, do that. And, you know, it's something that we will have to work through the logistics with the applicant. But their intent is to work with us to figure out how to identify and select tenants, move into those units.
So how do we get, a lot of council members here are interested in making sure that we're making the right decisions. I know Jean's in a, very, very involved in this and making sure that we get the best outcome for residents of this community, but also the city. But one of the loose ends is exactly that one. So I understand intent, but how do we confirm? Do we need to amend the agreement? Do we need to give direction? Like, what needs to happen to capture the quote-unquote affordable units that are unassigned to go to folks that are on the housing affordability waitlist?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think within the current contract, we can work all that out with Hazel View, with the applicant. Like I said, we do have processes in place with the social housing registry that maintains a below-market waitlist. One of the issues we often have with the waitlist is to make sure that we have enough tenants that want to move to that specific location. So it'll happen on a gradual basis as they come in with each building. And the year become available, we'll work those details out with them. But it would likely be under agreement between whether it's planning or housing services and the...
Okay, thank you, thank you for the clarity.
Anything else, councillor? Thank you, councillor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to follow up on a question councillor McKennie had asked earlier about, and the reply from Ms. Snedden, who indicated that there would be replacement of townhome for townhome. I just wondered if you could tell us how many townhomes are currently on the site and how many are planned at the end of build-out?
Mr. Mayor, that's a great question. And I'm going to, if you can give me a moment, councillor, I'll calculate that for you. I did receive a spreadsheet from Hazel View. They have a number of three bedrooms and four bedrooms, but I'll get you the exact number.
Yeah, because I think it's important to understand how many there's going to be. And if you could also tell us, you know, this project is 25 years. So what's the timeline on the construction of the townhomes?
Okay, so we'll wait for Ms. Snedden's response. Does anyone else wish to speak to this first motion? And then once councillor Deans is finished, we'll go to the vote.
Just a point of order, Mayor. It was said that if we keep negotiations going, they could apply to the OLT, or LPT, I guess now OLT. But my understanding is they could have applied months ago and have chosen to negotiate.
Clarifying things is not a point of order. You can't use point of order to clarify things other people said. You have two things you can do, point of order, point of privilege. Neither of them is about correcting someone else.
Can we get a clarification of the fact then? Can they go right now? Could they have gone months ago?
Councillor Minard, you don't have the floor and you don't have a point of privilege. We're waiting for Ms. Snedden to answer councillor Deans' question.
Mr. Mayor, I've been informed that they're going to be building the towns as quickly as possible as part of their initial phase of construction. And I'm just waiting on the number of three bedroom and four bedrooms. I'll get right back to you.
Thank you. And maybe just another question, Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting. I'm just wondering, just some clarity around OLT. Could they have gone beforehand?
Mr. Mayor, the councillor is correct. They already have appeal rights, but they've not exercised their appeal rights because of ongoing negotiations and processing.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I do have the number of units. So 34 bedroom plus dens, 18 four-bedroom, 109 three-bedroom.
Can you just say that again, Leanne?
Yes, four-bedroom plus a den, 34 bedroom, 18 three-bedroom, 109.
And currently?
That's currently.
Okay, and what they've committed to in terms of the development?
So anyone that would be in one of those units would get, you know, the same.
Well, but how many are they building of each of these units in the new building?
That, I don't know if I've got the break, if we've received the breakdown to that. But, Mr. Mayor, just give me a minute and I'll confirm whether or not we have that breakdown. No, I, yeah, I was correct. We do not have that breakdown. We're still at the official plan amendment level. We haven't gone into the zoning and the site plan.
So how, in answer to councillor McKennie's question, did you answer the question that we're guaranteeing a replacement of the type of unit that they have if we don't have a breakdown of what they're building?
It's been a part of section five in the MOU, and Hazel View has committed where they will be, you know, demolishing any of these particular units. They will be giving the exact same three-bedroom for a three-bedroom, four-bedroom for a four-bedroom.
Townhouse.
Correct.
As opposed to...
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, colleagues. I would encourage members of council not to support this motion. You've heard very clearly from staff, both legal and planning. It's not required. It's duplicating efforts. You know, we want to get shovels in the ground for these affordable housing units. We don't want to have a never-ending series of meetings and bilaterals that accomplishes very little. We know that the final position of the organization, what it is, and it's time to actually move on and stop talking about housing and start building affordable housing. So yays and nays on the Minard motion.
I'll just wrap up. I know I wasn't going to speak again, but after what's been said, if you can have the motion on the floor there, I just wanted to wrap up, Mayor. I just wanted to wrap up on the motion.
Right. The mayor has already spoken, and that's the ruling that I've made. The mayor is the last to speak. You chose not to, and we have yays and nays have been called. Thank you.
Yes, but things have been said in the days.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Luloff?
No.
Councillor Gower?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Druze?
No.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Oui. Councillor Meehan?
Oh, God. No.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier?
No.
Councillor Moffett?
No.
Councillor Minard?
Yes.
Councillor Ocean Tiri?
No.
Councillor McKennie?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Shirelli?
No.
Councillor Suds?
No.
Councillor Egley?
No.
Councillor Kitz?
No.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Leaper?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Seven yays, seventeen nays?
Okay, the next motion is by councillor Minard, second by councillor McKennie. Councillor Minard, would you like to introduce it?
No, I don't need to. If you could just put it up on the screen, though, so people can read it, which is what I was going to say in my wrap-up, which you should have afforded me, was just that the motion previously did not talk about anything to do with delaying an MOU or the site plans. It was very clear in the motion. With regard to this one, all this is talking about is the review of the methodology for affordable rent calculation, which we've heard should be looked at both at the community level and citywide. It just should be a median or an average, especially when we have communities such as this. So I hope that this can be supported. Planning committee did talk about bringing back reports to it and having a greater discussion about this. This enables that to happen in Q1 of 2022. So I hope members can support this.
Okay, thank you. So can we use the same vote as motion number one?
Mr. Mayor, I have my hand up. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make comment on this motion. We do throw around the term affordable housing quite loosely here. And I can tell you that even average median household income in this city is highly, highly unaffordable. It's one thing to ask for rents to, you know, be reduced a little bit, to get a bit of a, you know, a few hundred dollars off. But average median household income is very high in the city of Ottawa, making average median, making that, you know, which half of these units are tied to exceptionally unaffordable. As a matter of fact, on my salary alone, if I were alone, I could not afford any unit that use average median income to tag affordability. Second... Second, using average rent in this city is also highly unaffordable. Coming down twenty percent makes it a bit more affordable for some. Certainly, it will not take anyone out of our shelter, will not remove any of the two thousand individuals that slept in the shelter last night in this city. Certainly will not free up any space for the almost two hundred people who slept outside in this city last night. It most certainly will not reduce the twelve thousand five hundred waitlist in this city of people who desperately need lower rents. It most certainly will not provide any relief to people today who are spending fifty, sixty, seventy percent of their income on rent. And are always at risk of falling into homelessness, and do. They do, we just don't see it, which is not told, but they do. Every day, more and more people fall into homelessness. So between two thousand eleven and two thousand sixteen, for every community housing unit that was built. We lost seven market, affordable market rentals. So as we're building one, we're losing seven, and that's not changing. Every time we take taxpayer dollars and we invest them in affordable housing in this city. We lose at least seven affordable market rents. And we do have the option today of saying, you know what? These are not affordable housing units. We really have nothing to lose, I'll be honest with you. These are not affordable housing units. This is a bit of a break on some rents, but that's it. So unless we can go back and come back and say, you know what? This is what our residents, these are people living in our city, who need us to stand up for them and say, you know what? We'll go back and we'll try and get you a rent that you can afford. That will also allow you to feed yourself and your family, that you won't be food insecure. It's a rent that you can afford, that you can go away and buy your kids' school supplies so that they can go off to school. It's a rent that you can afford, where you're not going to have to use a food bank, you're not going to have to go and get charitable donation for snow suits for your kids. It's rents that you will be able to afford, because we know you are out, you're working, you're working hard, you're those frontline workers often. We called heroes through this pandemic. You're working hard, you have kids at home, and we don't want you to pay more than thirty percent of your income on rent. We want you to be able to keep that seventy percent, to be able to feed your children, to feed yourselves, buy snow suits, buy sweaters, buy school supplies. Put your children in recreational services, do all the things that you need to do to stay healthy as a family. So this is not going to allow for that. These are not affordable housing units. And if we say yes today to what's in front of us. We are ignoring the fact that these are not affordable housing units, and the families there will not be able to function. As full functioning members of society, the way that you and I can. So I would encourage you to at least ask for staff to go back and think about what affordability is. It's the least we can do for the people in the city who are struggling today to keep themselves and their families housed and out of severe poverty. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I raised this point at the committee. I asked about using another example of neighborhood. But the point was made that that would be Alta Vista and that would make it worse. And that, that is not the intention I had, I just want to ask the mover how he saw it, that in terms of neighborhood, of what was classified a neighborhood. Because I do think, going forward, we have to look at these, because the citywide definition has been pointed out by Counselor McKinney. Is quite high, we have very high wage earners in the city, mixed in with very low wage earners. So I just wanted to, the mover's comments on how he saw this.
Great question, Counselor, and I did, of course, take in your question. That's a large part where this, this came from, is that city staff would be reviewing the methodology for affordable rent calculation. Either at the neighborhood or ward level, and they'd look at the data available. So we do have data for Herengate, we do have demographic data, we have StatsCan data. So we're able to get into more specifics. And in this case, staff would go away, look at that data so that we could have a better affordable rent calculation potential. But ask them to do that work, exactly what you're saying, wouldn't necessarily take into account all of Alta Vista or other neighboring areas. They'd try to use the data from this area specifically, but report back on, to us on what they would find, so appreciate that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fleury, please.
To jump in on this, and I have a question too, maybe following that. So I understand the, the, the report that's in front of us, but for the mover, how would we see this going forward? Like, I, I'm hearing from the department that there's a number of negotiations that are happening with other applicants. And I wonder the risk of creating kind of micro affordability or micro situations within neighborhoods? And then risking removing choices for, for families and tenants depending on their, their family situation. So I just want to understand the, the policy logic behind capturing the community or the ward specific affordability ranges.
Thanks, Counselor, it's really to ensure we don't have the displacement that we're seeing. We are, we do have anti-displacement policies coming, of course, in the official, new official plan, which we've heard about. But in this case, the people that are currently living in Herengate or in the surrounding local community there. Under the circumstances of the affordable housing definitions that we're putting in, they normally would not be able to stay there. So it's about keeping communities together and not having displacement occur. So that, that's the basic policy rationale under an anti-displacement policy. And this can help with, with getting further defined in terms of how rent is calculated at an affordable level.
I appreciate the clarification.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Menard, do you want to wrap up in your motion?
No, thanks, I don't think it's needed, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, so can we transfer?
Yays and nays, yays and nays, please, Mayor.
Okay, I'm assuming it's going to be the same, but anyways, yays and nays on the second, then Menard McKinney, I'd urge members to vote against this.
Counselor Tierney?
No.
Counselor Luloff?
No.
Counselor Gower?
No.
Counselor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Counselor Druze?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Counselor Mihen?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Cloutier?
No.
Counselor Moffett?
No.
Counselor Menard?
Yes.
Counselor Elchantiri?
No.
Counselor McKinney?
Yes.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
No.
Counselor Suds?
No.
Counselor Egley?
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Egley, I didn't catch that.
Yes.
Counselor Kits?
No.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Counselor Leeper?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Dudas?
Yeah.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Ten yays, fourteen nays.
Okay, the next motion is also by Counselor Menard. Counselor Menard, if you'd like to introduce your motion.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. The motion is about increasing the percentage of affordable housing made available within the development. And it asks to do that not through the MOU, but through the upcoming zoning and site plan agreement processes. This is something that we can look at through those, those processes. We're going to be seeing other applications come forward in this process. And this is something that the community, the ward counselor, local residents can, can work on. And so at this point, we are hoping that this occurs. This could be through city subsidized affordable housing. It could be in partnership with the developer here. And it speaks to the fact that, you know, Counselor Egley raised this. We're not talking about twenty percent, which is what was committed before, we're talking about sixteen percent. So it is getting to the level that they said and they committed to, that they'd get to. Developers often say one thing and do another, it's really unfortunate. We're seeing bait and switches constantly, whether it's, you know, bedrooms in basements where they come back for it and they said it's not going to be there. Or whether it's, you know, kind of selling off properties that they said they wouldn't be selling off and demolishing them. These are things that happen a lot in our city, and it really shouldn't be allowed to happen. If you commit to something, to a community upfront and say, we're going to have affordable housing on this site. Like we heard from some developers in my ward, who then backtracked on that promise. Or if you hear, we're going to have twenty percent affordable housing, but then you end up with sixteen percent. It's just about holding developers to their word, so I hope this council can do that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brockington, on the motion.
Thanks, Mayor, can staff just help me better understand, it's the last few words of this motion. Within the development through any upcoming zoning and site plan agreement processes. How do we leverage what Counselor Menard is asking for at that stage? Could Ms. Seddon elaborate for me, just so I can better understand? We've negotiated this agreement, we heard they, they don't want to negotiate further. But how do we then sit down again during, during the zoning and site plan processes?
Mr. Mayor, this memorandum of understanding will be used moving forward to this official plan amendment as the policy direction. For how we'll move forward with, with these units. With respect to any comments about zoning and site plan stages. If, if there were incentives that came from the city's program that were able to incentivize. Then, then, then there could be some opportunity for discussion. But the intent of this MOU is it's, it's a signed document. And, and staff are not recommending, as Mr. Willis has pointed out, we do run that risk that we could be losing this agreement altogether. So we do not recommend at this point in time any further negotiations with respect to the amount of affordable housing we've acquired today.
I'm sorry, when does the MOU? Become a legally binding document? Is it today, council approves this, and then we'll actually sign it?
I'll ask Mr. Mark to respond to that.
Mr. Mayor, it will become a legally binding document once it's signed by both parties. So that would be, I anticipate sometime between tomorrow and for the next meeting of council. The official plan amendment cannot be listed for adoption until it has been signed by Hazel View and the city in final form.
Okay, so when we sit down for zoning and site of plan, the MOU will have been signed. But we can still talk, if, if both parties agree to make changes, then you can modify the agreement. So I'll let Counselor Menard speak for himself, but I'm just saying, if, if we have other opportunities. To have the discussion to increase affordable housing, it's not going to threaten the MOU, because we will have signed the MOU. Right, they're not going to backtrack, so. I'd like to hear some strong reasons why we wouldn't, I don't think, at this point in the stage, the motion says we also engage local residents, community groups, Herengate tenant reps. For this purpose, I don't think that's necessary, I think you're, you're adding folks to the discussion. We know what the position is of the community, I don't think that piece is necessary, I think that piece should come, should come out. If you're going to talk about affordable housing, it should really be between the city councillor and applicant at this point. And I'm not trying to discount the local community, I'm just saying, I don't think at this point in the game, you need to bring them into it, so. We all want to get more affordable housing, the worst thing they're going to say is no, it won't threaten the MOU, because the MOU will be signed. So I need to hear some stronger reasons why we would not support this motion, thank you.
Okay, thank you, anyone else on this? Okay, I, I would encourage members not to vote for this. First of all, the sixteen percent is not correct, the staff have indicated when you include all of the units, it actually is over twenty percent. So yays and nays on the final Menard McKinney motion, please?
Counselor Tierney?
No.
Counselor Luloff?
No.
Counselor Gower?
No.
Counselor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Counselor Druze?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Conseil Fleury? Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Counselor Mihen?
No.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier?
No.
Counselor Moffett?
No.
Counselor Menard?
Yes.
Counselor Elchantiri?
No.
Counselor McKinney?
Yes.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
No.
Counselor Suds?
No.
Counselor Egley?
No.
Counselor Kits?
No.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Counselor Leeper?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Dudas?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Sixteen nays.
Our next motion is by Counselor Brockington, seconded by Counselor Cloutier. Counselor Brockington, if you'd like to introduce your motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just trying to remember which one it is here, okay, so I spoke at the beginning, this is really a documentation of the process. To document best practices, staff are on board with this, and this can be done by mid-year next year. So again, I believe there will be more of, of these memorandum in the future. It'd be great not to, you know, recreate things from scratch for, for different members of council going through this, but it's really good. It's, it's good practice to have a documentation of this, it's a multi-year process, and I would certainly like to learn from this. I do think this is going to happen in Riverwood at some point as well, so if folks have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Okay, anyone like to speak? So on the motion, Carrie? Next motion is also by Counselor Brockington, seconded by Counselor Cloutier, Counselor Brockington, if you'd like to introduce the motion.
Thanks, or, yes, this is really a motion about respect and courtesy. We, we heard from the community, a desire to, some people would like to come back to Herengate. They certainly recognize this as their home and as their community. And when they were evicted a number of years ago, they, they had to leave the community. And so this is just a formal request that the city would make to Hazel View to make, to request that they would make. The, the former tenants aware that there's an opportunity to come back, that they would be welcomed back. So it's, it's no cost to Hazel View, but really, this is to inform previous tenants who were evicted of the opportunity to come back. If they qualify for affordable housing unit, make them aware that, that this is there. So this is just to match what has been requested by the community, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, on the motion, Carrie? The final motion we have is by Counselor Kavanaugh, seconded by Counselor Cloutier. Counselor Kavanaugh, if you'd like to introduce your motion, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my secondar. What we heard from the debates at planning. We, we are talking about affordable housing, and affordable housing is needed because people have low incomes. And what we're trying to do is bring about an opportunity to have better income. And what we're trying to do is bring about an opportunity to have better incomes. And this was an issue that was raised by several of the speakers, the delegations. And it struck me that we we needed to have that as a MOU as well. And I see that there's cooperation on that. And I'd like to thank the Ottawa District Labour Council for their offer to to be part of it as as well. I think that's really important that we're talking about wages, union wages, trades and and opportunities for people to earn a better living. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the Kavanaugh-Cloutier motion? On the motion, Carrie?
Carrie.
Now, debate on sorry, councillor Egley might like to speak. We're now speaking on the main motion as amended. Councillor Egley, I saw your hand up.
You know, my hand up was actually for the last motion we just passed very quickly. I was going to support it, but I did have a quick question for the mover. It might ask the question, or are we at that time pass?
Councillor, with the permission of council, can we go back to that? Agreed?
Yes.
Councillor Egley?
My my question for this councillor Kavanaugh was, with the memorandum of of understanding that that the motion contains, was that particular to that community or what? Were we looking for something broader throughout the city that? I support either one. I just was looking for some clarification.
That's a good question. I think this is an opportunity to look at this for the future. This was specific to to Heron Gate as as a starter. But as in all the other MOUs and agreements, we're looking at models and that we should look at for the future.
Thank you and thank you, Mr.
Thank you. So we're now on debate on the final motion committee report as amended. Councillor Dean says the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I wanted to ask questions. This is the first opportunity there has been for questions on the official plan amendment. So I know council has been very seized with the aspect of affordable housing on this site and rightly so. But as the member of council for the neighbouring community of Heatherington, I am very aware of what it takes to revitalize the neighborhood. And councillor Harder will will know is her time as chair of the planning committee, she was very helpful in the Heatherington community in and working through all of the issues that come with density, with come with highly racially racialized communities, with a lot of new Canadians occupying those units. And to me, amenity space, park space, open space, green space is absolutely imperative, especially when you're talking about densification. And this neighborhood currently, just looking at the MOU currently has 1,864 units. At build out, this community will have 6,427 units, so a significant increase. And even an increase of 1,439 units over what is currently allowed. So a lot more density on this site than was originally intended. And with that, to me comes a real obligation to consider the green space parks that are there currently, the amenity space and how it will function for that community. And when I look at the official plan amendment, where we are today, Hazelview can build 3,200 units. And all they were required for the first 3,200 units is a front-ending agreement, $350,000 for improvements in Sandalwood Park. That's it for 3,200 units. And, you know, I I can't project the future. Maybe 15 years from now, we'll get to the point where they convey a hectare and a half of land to the city for open space on the site, but that's way down the road. And frankly, I don't think it represents 10%, which we should have as a minimum, the 10% green space conveyance. And you look at the size, 21 hectares, we're getting probably 15 years down the road, 1.5 hectares of green space. And in the meantime, I mean, go for councillor Cloutier, he and I have had this conversation, he's using some of his small ward budget to put $350,000 and the city is also kicking in a little bit of money. But you have a private sector, deep-pocketed developer that wants to densify an already dense neighborhood. And we're not asking them to contribute anything more than $350,000 upfront in a front-ending agreement for the first 15 years. And to me, that is just so insufficient for a neighborhood like this. And, you know, you want to talk about building better revitalized neighborhoods and how we're going to ensure that these are spaces that work for the communities that live there, that contribute to quality of life, that ensure that we don't have a lot more issues around crime in those communities. We need open spaces and we need good amenity spaces in our park. And to me, what what we have in front of us today is just highly inadequate. So I guess my question is, and councillor Cloutier and I've had an opportunity to discuss this, but how would we go about ensuring we do a lot better than this moving forward?
Who's your question to councillor?
I I suppose it's to Mr. Willis or Ms. Nen or whoever whoever has negotiated to date on parkland. How how are we going to get a deal, a an agreement in place that is much more sufficient than the one we have today?
Ms. Nen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Ms. Jervay or Ms. Yu that can speak to specifically the park space, the multi-use pathways, the additional park amenities that will be a part of this file.
Okay, thank you, Leanne, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the planning staff worked closely with parks planning during the review and the development of the OPA on this application. I feel it's important to to provide some basic facts to begin with. The site area total is 21 hectares and that includes a number of collector rolls and the local rolls that are already under the public ownership. So they actually develop development land is about 18 hectares. Within that 18 hectares that are subject to the official plan amendment area, there's one block that is already developed, which is known as the local vista. Switch parkland dedication was collected to the cashing loop. And so for the remaining about approximately 1,600, 16 hectares development area, parks planning staff applied the rate in the park bylaw, parkland dedication bylaw, which is about a 10%. So that's how staff helped the center park, so on the on the concept plan, about 1.59 hectare is in general is appropriate. So through the zoning and the site plan, once we know the specific numbers of the units and can nail down the exact parkland dedication, if there will be shortage, we would either take more land or take cashing.
Okay, well, I would never actually think taking cash in lieu in an area like this would be a good idea, but why was why was there an agreement to wait till until 50% build out of the entire site before we would take that land? Why? What? I I mean, I understand they have to take buildings down. But why wouldn't we have wanted to get more in the front end of the agreement in terms of park redevelopment of the Sandalwood Park that's there now? It could use a significant overhaul. And $1 million or about that with everybody kicking in is going to buy very little in terms of that park redevelopment. They can build 3,200 units before they ever have to convey any land to us. So why wouldn't we have worked to get more in the front end?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can start by answering the question. I wasn't involved directly in the negotiations, but we were dealing with a package deal of negotiations where we put a high degree of priority on affordable housing. So, you know, in our council sets the policy on the parks dedication bylaws, and this is an issue that's being looked at in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. Ultimately, our colleagues in RCFAS do guide us on what we take in what order. But when we were negotiating, we put a priority in the affordable housing stocks. So there are puts and takes in this discussion. And that's where we arrived at. We could have pressed on that, but it might have affected our negotiating position on the other matters.
So on a go-forward basis, will there be a renewed emphasis on trying to get more upfront dollars for parkland redevelopment, at least of Sandalwood Park or of earlier land dedication?
So again, I'll go back, I'll go back to that. We have established policies in place that will guide each subsequent planning application. It's also guided by the MOU in this instance, and we will have these discussions as every application comes forward. But as Ms. Yu explained, there is there is a sequencing of the development on the site that guides how the the areas are going to be developed and what's going to be available at what time.
My my opinion is this is highly problematic. You're you're allowing the construction of 3,200 units with an upfront parkland dedication of $350,000. I mean,
councillor.
Nothing.
Thank you. Councillor Gower, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I have I guess a couple of questions for staff. First of all, we've heard a number of times this discussion, things like inclusionary zoning policy, anti-displacement policy. Could staff give us a quick overview of any significant policy reports that we'll be receiving that relate to affordable housing between now and the end of this term of council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just quickly answer that question. First of all, in order to bring any of those policies forward, we need the new official plan in place in order to create the enabling policy. Without the official plan, those policies cannot be brought forward under provincial provincial policy statement. So staff are working on the inclusionary zoning work and there is work and information coming out later this fall on our proposals on inclusionary zoning. And Mr. Said can can add to this because he's been working more closely with the project. And we are looking at the legal feasibility of the housing stock protection work right now and hope to report to council. They will be reported on this term. We're just waiting for result, information back on our legal review on the feasibility and what our powers are. I want to emphasize again, you can't apply policies that are not yet in place to an application before you right now to decide on under the Planning Act. That would be that those new policies would affect any new applications that would come later.
Said, do you have any additional clarifications before I ask my next question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the only thing I would add is when we bring forward the background study for the inclusionary zoning, you know, we expect to have a very fulsome discussion about the definition of affordable housing in that document. So this will come back and we will have an opportunity to to continue looking at average market rent and if we should be using something different.
Okay, thank you. That was going to be my next question, which is what is our, what is our opportunity? What, where should we be defining? What is affordable housing? And that's, you're saying that's coming through the inclusionary zoning?
I think I think yes, we'll have a good discussion through inclusionary zoning. We continue to ask this question as well in housing services. And I, and it's not my intention to confuse anyone with the definition of affordable housing. It's just that with, you know, between federal and provincial governments, we deal with many different definitions, you know, depending on what whatever program we're working with at that time. But we do recognize that we need a better working definition going forward. And I think the inclusionary zoning would be a really good, you know, context for us to have that discussion.
Okay, thank you. If I could briefly wrap up, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the residents who were evicted in 2016 and 2018. That was caused hardship. It was a harmful process, and I think we need to recognize that as a council. And it was the outrage that we heard from our community and even nationwide that I think led to this whole process of developing a MOU and what's in front of us today. I think we also have to acknowledge on that question of the definition of affordable housing, the the gap between what we're defining as affordable and what many residents in this community would say is affordable is a big gap. And we've heard today, we heard a planning committee, a number of suggestions on how affordable housing could be better defined. And I'm looking forward to having that conversation later on in this term of council. I spoke a bit about this at planning committee, but but I am struggling with what's fair and reasonable to ask a private developer. And that's a question that is an economic consideration. It's a social and moral responsibility consideration, and it's also has to be in consideration of our policy and of provincial laws and legislation. I think we also have to acknowledge again that there are over 12,000 people on a waiting list for affordable housing. We do have a housing crisis, a housing emergency. And there are a number of ways that we need to continue tackling that. We just carried the capital strategy outlining our 2021 and 2022 capital plan for social housing. We do have the official plan coming up. There are negotiated agreements underway, continuing with a number of private developers. These need to continue. There are mechanisms we have under section 37 negotiations for community benefits. And there is inclusionary zoning, and I know there's also some work underway along community improvement plans that would consider affordable housing as an eligible grant or tax rebate process. So I think this is a good start in terms of what a memorandum of understanding should look like with the private developer, but clearly there is a lot of work and a lot of improvement that we need to do going forward. And I I hope it only gets better from here. But thank you to councillor Cloutier and to staff and to other members of council who've been involved in getting us to this point. I'll be supporting the report as amended and encourage colleagues to as well. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Moffett, please?
Thank you. Just wanted to comment briefly on a couple of things. I think, you know, the overall, there's there's a conversation here happening about one application, official plan amendment. And there's bigger picture stuff that's also happening. And I think the motion from from councillor Brockington, speaking to future MOUs is a is a positive, saying that this could be a standard for the future that we should consider. I look back to 100 Bayshore, you know, passed unanimously by this council, by planning committee. Councillor Kavanaugh put in the work and got affordable housing committed for 15 years in that property. This one, this one goes a bit further. The next one goes even further. I think that's what we have to keep on working toward. Don't get lost in the in the one project. But look toward the future and continue building on this and and being better. I heard a comment earlier that voting against this because what do we have to lose? Well, I would argue that we, as councillors, you're right, have very little to lose in this. The Heron Gate community, on the other hand, they have a lot to lose if this MOU actually didn't go through. If the OPA was voted down and the MOU dies, those residents have a lot to lose. So we can't sit here and vote on one issue and pretend it's the bigger picture issue. It's not. We know it's not. We have more work to do. I don't think anyone who ran this table will 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 argue that. But we have to look at what we have in front of us. And we have to look at the people that are living in that community today and what protections are offered for them through the MOU. Don't risk losing this battle as if the people involved don't matter. And because it's a bigger picture that we need to look at to win that war. We need to win the war. We need to win the little battles here throughout this process, too. We can't risk it all. We can't risk it on on the merits of of this one issue and at the risk of the the residents that live there today in Heron Gate, we do owe them something. They were failed at the start of this process. The community and the city and Hazelview and councillor Cloutier have all worked together to to address that, to make it better so that it doesn't keep happening as to how it happened in in 2018. So I think, you know, I think this is a positive. I get that. Was the was the 100 Bayshore project perfect? No. Is this perfect? No. Will we get to perfection? Maybe, probably not. But we have to keep working toward that. And I think some of the stuff that we're talking about, councillor Gower was just talking with Said about what's to come. I've talked before, councillor McKenna and I and Said have talked about, could we do a CIP for affordable housing in this city? I think so. I think we could, and I think we should look at that. So I think we need to keep on working in the same direction. I don't think we should take these these steps and consider them hills to die on. We have a good thing in front of us here. I think councillor Cloutier has worked heavily with this community. I think a number of councillors on this on this screen have worked heavily on this project as well. So I just want to thank everyone involved. So I just want to thank everyone involved, Said. Geez, I don't think we can have a better person in that role right now. But, so I appreciate that work and everyone's efforts here. Thanks.
Very good perspective. Thank you, Counselor. Conseil, Flory.
Thank you. I'd like to start by emphasizing the efforts of a colleague. You know, we all have difficult issues to deal with that we would like to avoid, but that they become necessities in our communities. Yesterday, I remember Counselor El Shantir of talking about the dump. You know, it just goes to show that we have all kinds of discussions as elected representative. Mr. Cloutier never wished for this challenge, but within legal limits, within what was allowed to him, he did everything possible to protect his community, to work with the city, to work with the owners. And we can't blame the few shortfalls to a lack of efforts, to a lack of goodwill. No, because I congratulate you, Counselor, for the work you've done. I'm my, my questions that follow have nothing to do with what you've accomplished.
One, we have to recognize today, as Mr. Willis advised to us, we have to have the right policies in place prior to applications coming in. What we recognize today is that we have major gaps. We have major gaps to prevent rent evictions. We have major gaps to include affordability. We have a desire to see more rental. We have a desire to see more intensification. And all of those worlds make it very complicated. How do you allow a rental property owner to renew their properties while not losing affordability? Why not, while not pushing tenants out of an area? Those are really complicated and deep questions. And I, 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 my, my vote today is in no time in relation to the effort of an agreement. My vote will be in, in really pushing the city to really be aggressive in bringing the right levels of bylaws as it relates to rent evictions and, and really help council shape what we can do and what we must do in relations to affordability. Floating of affordability and various programs, and Said highlighted it well, it's complicated, a lot of players involved. It's not fair for council. It's not fair to do that on, on the air. We have to get the right fundamentals in place. So then when a project comes to be, we know what levers and what tools we have. And certainly throughout this journey that John and Acorn and his community have brought forward, we've, we've all informed ourselves, and that's certainly a worthwhile learning experience. I think it is a, a, a first step. It's, it's a lot of effort to get us there, but we need to do more. We need to have the right fundamentals in place to prevent rent evictions, to increase affordable housing, and to see how intensification doesn't mean gentrification. I think that's a major challenge that we will face in some, some areas of the city, specifically as, as rental housing stock is on the private side, is, is up for renewal in many instances. So I, I'll conclude my comments there, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak before Counselor Cloutier wraps? Counselor Cloutier.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Merci beaucoup, Monsieur Damar, and thank you, everyone, for the discussion today. Merci, Mathieu. Thank you, Scott, for your, for your words. And appreciate the continued discussion that will happen beyond today. And the Heron Gate, as, as you know, the Heron Gate application is a result of a years, years of work. And again, thank you, planning staff. Thank you, housing staff. Thank you, legal staff, for, for your work and, and the dialogue with community members and partnering organizations with residents. In Heron Gate will benefit from the agreement and, and the community that will continue to develop and to grow over time and on which we'll monitor and report. And, and it includes hundreds of hours of work and discussion and multiple departments and, and, and of course, with the proponent, with the proponent. And of course, I'd like to encourage you all to vote yes to the file so that we can continue that, that important work. There's an immediate need for us to take action on the housing crisis we are in. Counselor McKenney last November said, every affordable housing unit is important to that family. They were right when they said that, and I thank them for that. And we have to be creative, and we need to continue being creative and fostering these partnerships, private developers. This application doesn't solve the entire problem, but it is over a thousand affordable housing units for a minimum fifteen, twenty years. And the residents of Heron Gate, in the ten pub or so public consultations that I've had, that we've had have been quite clear, eliminate evictions and displacement, no matter what the Residential Tenancies Act says. They want that security. They want it now. Protect households and guarantee like-for-like housing at the same rent. Guarantee us that now. Approve much-needed improvements to Sandalwood Park now, in addition to a future park and future community space that will be part of the application. And more housing stock, more housing choice that is comfortable, up-to-date, modern, productive, safe, and affordable. And now, we need that now. And the residents of Heron Gate can't face more delays and more uncertainty. And we have that opportunity to provide a little bit of that certainty for them today. And so I encourage you to vote to improve the, the, the application as amended, the legally binding MOU that is attached. And I certainly look forward to continuing the important work and our next steps. Merci, Monsieur Damar. Thank you.
Now, Conseil, thank you very much, Counselor. I'd like to add my voice to congratulate you, Counselor Cloutier. You've worked really hard on this file for over four years. A lot of negotiations, a lot of support from Counselor Harder, our former planning chair, and Counselors Moffett and Gower, the current co-chairs of planning, as well as our staff, Leanne Sneddon, Tim Marks, Steve Willis, Said Sayad, Parks and Recreation staff. This was a, a full-court press to do whatever we could to bring about as many affordable housing units as possible. And as Ms. Sneddon indicated, this is a landmark decision by the City of Ottawa and the private sector that never before have we seen this amount of affordable housing, and it's one thousand and twenty, that would be brought into the inventory of the course of the next couple of years. Now, the last time we had a similar situation, every single member of council, to my knowledge, voted for Counselor Kavanaugh's great work that she did that brought eight percent of the units into affordable housing. So I find it strange that some are considering voting against a plan that brings in twenty percent when you voted for eight percent, because twenty percent is significantly more than eight percent. But Counselor Kavanaugh deserves full credit for working with the proponent and staff to come up with what, at the time, was a very acceptable and reasonable increase in affordable housing units. Now, I also want to thank Counselors Brockington and Kits for the motions that they brought forward that received strong support from, from members of council. Also, I think it's important to recognize that the company doesn't have to do any of this. They would, they currently have as, as a right to permission to build nearly five thousand units and multiple low-rise six-story buildings in the, in this site. And as a result of this negotiation, so it has been ongoing for a long time, we are seeing an additional fourteen, one thousand four hundred and thirty-nine units of density in exchange for commitment to provide one thousand and twenty affordable housing units. Is this arrangement perfect? No, nor was the Bay Shore arrangement. But we have limited tools, as you all know. And I would encourage those who purport to be advocates for housing, put down the iPhone and stop tweeting attacks on members of council and the federal government and the provincial government, because that has proven time and time again to be completely ineffective. We will see more affordable housing units built in this city, in this term of council, than any time in the history of the City of Ottawa. But we still need more. I recognize that. And that's why on the survey that I've sent out to federal politicians and candidates, we've asked them, how are they going to continue to improve partnerships with the City of Ottawa and every other municipality in Ontario and Canada? And what's the alternative to this? You know, let's go back and some motions that were brought forward. Let's drag this on another couple of years, not see any action, no shovels in the ground, big gab fest. We're good, we're good at that, but that doesn't help the people of this community. So I'd encourage you, those of you who advocate for housing in your wards and citywide, think about this for a minute. You support at eight percent, please come and support us at twenty percent. Yays and nays, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Counselor Tierney.
Yes.
Counselor Luloff.
Yes.
Counselor Gower.
Yes.
Counselor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Counselor DeRus.
Yes.
Counselor Hubley.
Yes.
Conseil Fleury.
No.
Counselor Mihen.
Yes.
Counselor King.
No.
Conseil Coucher.
Oui.
Counselor Moffett.
Yes.
Counselor Minard.
No.
Counselor El Shantiri.
Yes.
Counselor McKenney.
No.
Counselor Brockington.
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Egli.
Yes.
Counselor Kits.
Yes.
Counselor Deans.
No.
Counselor Leeper.
No.
Counselor Harder.
Yes.
Counselor Dudas. Mayor Watson?
Yes. Great, thank you. Next is an item held by Counselor Shirelli, zoning bylaw amendment thirteen fifty-six Clyde Avenue. Modifications Reglement de Zonage Trois Sankt Sis Avenue Clyde. We've already passed the Gower-Moffett motion. Counselor Shirelli, you have the floor.
Yeah, I wanted to register, Counsel, that we held extensive public meetings on this. At our last one, we had over eighty-six people. And they were very, very much upset by the height of the building. It's double the height of any other building in the ward, in, in any of the buildings nearby. And when you consider that that intersection, Clyde and Baseline was cited as a transit hub in justification of the rezoning. Well, the fact that it relies on the bus rapid transit going in on Baseline Road, and as you know, we have no funding for that, and it requires Premier Ford to give us the funding for that, and there's certainly no indication that that's coming. So I don't think we should be setting new height limits based on a transit system that may not be coming here. So I did want to ask staff if they have any new indications about potential funding from the Ford government for the bus rapid transit on Baseline.
Mr. Mayor, since Planning Committee two weeks ago, there has been no further indication that any further funding has been provided for the Baseline Rapid Transit project.
Have they given you any indication as to when we would get an answer?
Mr. Mayor, no, they have not.
Okay. All right. So as far as we know, there is not going to be a Baseline Bus Rapid Transit because City Council is not going to fund the whole thing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that's a question from the counselor, but if it is a question, council has approved an environmental assessment for the Baseline Rapid Transit, which, which elevates the project to a level of policy equivalent to other matters in the official plan.
So we still don't have the money?
Mr. Mayor, the, we, the, the, the funding is not yet in place. That is correct.
Okay. So there's no estimate, or is there an estimate as to roughly when we would know?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, we're not in a position to answer that question.
Okay. Well, as you recall, when we did the rezoning of the, for the Walmart at Baseline and Clyde, there was a lot of, a lot of upset about the intersection of Baseline and Clyde failing three times during the day. And measures were taken at the rezoning to provide geometric changes to the intersection that actually worked very well and improved the intersection. So to now suddenly put a building up that's double the height of the nearby buildings, does that increase the chance that that intersection is going to regress?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant submitted a transportation impact assessment for their zoning bylaw amendment. There's no indication at this time that there would be any issues. A site plan application has yet to be submitted, but further measures will be reviewed at the time if and when a site plan application is submitted.
Okay. Can we seek further geometric changes if that happens?
Mr. Mayor, it is, it is a possibility. We just have to wait and see what the TIA will say.
Okay.
Anything else, Counselor?
No.
Okay, so on the motion, carried?
Descent.
Sent by Counselor Shirelli. Motion to adopt reports.
Oui.
That the report, the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Twenty-four, the Baltic Heritage Subcommittee Report Number Twenty-three, the Planning Committee Report Forty-seven, Transportation Committee Number Twenty-one, and a report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements as at the council, City Council Meeting of July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one be received and adopted as modified. Adopted?
Dudas, second by Counselor Gower. Counselor Dudas, if you'd like to introduce your motion, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I know I had previously read this out at the last council meeting, so I'll just skip ahead to that therefore be resolved. That council directs, it's moving on, there we go. That council directs staff and planning infrastructure and economic development to undertake as part of the new zoning bylaw project a comprehensive review of the policies and zoning for inflatable structured domes, including evaluating establishing appropriate setbacks for residential properties, exploring the creation of a separate use for inflatable structure dome, recognizing that it is, has a significant difference to built form, and establishing minimum landscaping requirements to mitigate impacts on neighbors.
The questions on the motion, carried?
Carried. Carried.
Counselor Dudas. A motion is requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Motion exige la suspension des règles de procédure. The first one is one from myself, signed by Counselor Eggline, as capacity is care of Ottawa Public Health on a mandatory vaccine policy for members of council. On suspension, carried?
Carried.
Carried.
As you know, the city manager has instituted a policy with respect to mandatory vaccine requirements for our employees, but he doesn't have the authority to direct members of council because we're considered independent of the public service. So this requires us to follow the same rules and regulations as our employees. And I ask for your support, and I thank Counselor Eggline and the Board of Health for their endorsement. On the motion?
Carried.
Carried.
Okay. The next, the motion requiring suspension of the rules is also by myself, signed by Counselor Eggline with respect to council-appointed citizen volunteers on committees and boards. On suspension, carried?
Carried.
And as indicated, we have a number of people who sit on boards and agencies, whether it's uh, the Transit Commission, the Ottawa Board of Health, the Public Library Board and so on, and to treat those individuals the same as the rest of our employees. On the motion, carried.
Carried.
The next. Sorry, sorry. Councillor Shirelli, you dissent it?
Dissent, yes.
Okay. Uh, next is, um, a motion by councillor Eggly, signed by councillor Gower, with respect to an interim control bylaw uh, for the study of lands along the Woodruff Corridor, LRT. Uh, obviously being a, um, interim control bylaw, there's a time sensitivity. So on suspension, carried. Councillor Eggly, I'd like to introduce your motion.
Uh, thank you very much, Mister Mayor. Uh, you may recall, colleagues, about this time last year, uh, we passed a very similar motion uh, around, um, uh, these, these lands, which, uh, may well be in play, um, as LRT, uh, moves forward. Um, city staff in, in the planning department asked for an opportunity, uh, to study these lands. And, um, and that is why we put the bylaw on in the first place. That study still continues to determine, uh, uses going forward. And, um, staff needs more time to finish that study. So, um, they're asking, uh, for that time and this motion will, will, uh, extend the bylaw and, and allow them the time to finish up all their study work. So I appreciate your support on this.
Councillor Leaper has a question or comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I, I will virtually certainly be supporting this and I've appreciated, uh, council colleagues, um, support in past in extending the bylaw. This is, uh, so this will put it into the second of a maximum two-year period for, uh, the interim control bylaw, I believe.
That's correct. This will begin the second, this will begin the second year, correct?
Yep. Uh, no, oftentimes interim control bylaws preclude other interim controls, uh, bylaws from being brought into effect at the same time. Uh, do staff have any concerns that there's anything on the horizon, uh, that this interim control bylaw may preclude?
Mister Mayor, no, we, we looked at that issue last year when the original bylaw was brought forward and we feel this, this area is an isolated planning issue. And, and as councillor Eggly, uh, properly indicated, we, the law says we only have one year and council needs to renew it. If we go beyond the one year, we do need a, a little bit more time beyond the one year.
It's, uh, it's not going to have applicability to other corridors or, um, perfect, I see you shaking your head. Yeah, no, thank you very much and, uh, great initiative, councillor Eggly.
See, there's also come on down. On the motion, carried.
Carried.
Carried. Uh, the final motion that I have that requires suspension of the rules is with respect to a commemorative plaque in Strathcona Park. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Fleury. On suspension.
Carried.
Um, as you know, we have a commemorative, um, plaque, uh, tree program, a commemorative tree program. Uh, the Jamaican Ottawa Community Association celebrated its fiftieth anniversary a few years ago, and they wanted to put a commemorative tree in Strathcona Park, which they did. Now they like to have a plaque on it. Uh, the plaque traditionally, uh, is, uh, in memory of someone, uh, and this is, uh, outside those rules. So staff inform me that we need council approval to allow the Jamaican Ottawa Community Association to install their plaque at their cost. On the motion, carried. Adopted. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules? Notices a motion for consideration at subsequent meetings. Motion to introduce bylaws, councillor Fleury and seconded by councillor Kavanaugh, please.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed and that the following bylaw be read and passed in accordance with the motion approved at today's meeting. A bylaw of the city of Ottawa to amend bylaw number twenty twenty-three-ten entitled a bylaw of the city of Ottawa to establish interim control for lands along the Woodruff Corridor, LRT, to extend the period of the interim control for one year.
Uh, thank you. On the motion, carried, adopted.
Carried.
Confirmation bylaw, please councillor Fleury and seconded by councillor Kavanaugh.
That the following bylaw be read and pass.
That this will adopted? Adapted.
Deputy Clerk, any, uh, inquiries?
No, Mister Mayor.
Mister Mayor, I don't have anything, so I move.
Moved by yourself, made by councillor Kavanaugh, the council meeting adjourned. Carried, thank you. Media availability will take place at, uh, one thirty. Uh, la réunion pour la conférence de presse.